Good evening, welcome everyone. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands by the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join in a moment of silence for our fallen servicemen and women. Alright, so we'll start with an exciting event. We have our annual Odes of Office for the Fire Department. Congratulations on the elections. And we'll begin with the Chief. Chief Taunton, please come up.
I state your name.
I, James Taunton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will protect and defend.
That I will protect and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution, State of New York.
And the laws and ordinances of the Village of Garden City.
And the laws and ordinances of the Village of Garden City.
Further, I will abide by.
Further, I will abide by.
The bylaws, code, and general orders.
Bylaws, code, and general orders.
Of the Garden City Fire Department.
Of the Garden City Fire Department.
And that I will at all times.
And that I will at all times.
Carry out the duties assigned to me.
Carry out the duties assigned to me.
As Chief of the Garden City Fire Department.
As Chief of the Garden City Fire Department.
And that I will at all times.
And that I will at all times.
Strive to protect lives and property entrusted to my care.
Strive to protect lives and property entrusted to my care.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
By the powers vested in me as Mayor of the Village of Garden City, I declare you duly installed.
Congratulations. Do we do pictures at the end or now?
We'll always be allowed to do it.
I'll still do one at a time. We'll do pictures after each one. Do you want to come up for the picture? Or do you want to wait and do it at the end?
At the end?
At the end.
Thank you.
Alright, and now. We have the Assistant Chief.
I state your names.
I, Jonathan Perola.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will protect and defend.
I will protect and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
Constitution of the State of New York.
And the laws and ordinances of the Village of Garden City.
The laws and ordinances of the Village of Garden City.
Further, I will abide by.
Further, I will abide by.
The bylaws, code, and general orders.
Bylaws, codes, and general orders.
Of the Garden City Fire Department.
Of the Garden City Fire Department.
And that I will at all times.
And I will at all times.
Carry out the duties assigned to me.
Carry out the duties assigned to me.
As Assistant Chief of the Garden City Fire Department.
As Assistant Chief of the Garden City Fire Department.
And that I will at all times.
And I will at all times.
Strive to protect lives and property entrusted to my care.
Strive to protect lives and property entrusted to my care.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
By the powers vested in me, as Mayor of the Village of Garden City, I declare you duly installed.
Congratulations, Chief. Congratulations, sir.
Alright, we'll do the Chiefs. I'll go on the other side and.
Hold on, I gotta go this way. I gotta go down that way. You gotta rotate. You gotta do it in right corner.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you again.
Okay, it's my pleasure tonight to install the line in corporate offices as well as the First Battalion delegates if they're here. I'm just gonna call the names and if you're here, the Captain of the Engine Company, Matthew Carroll, Captain of Trunk Company, Christopher Mayer, First Lieutenant Engine Company, Joseph Philip Pappas, First Lieutenant Truck Company, Jonathan Giuliano, Second Lieutenant Engine Company, Christopher Mustacello, Second Lieutenant Truck Company, Ryan Moody, and the Officer Secretary, Michael Reel, Treasurer, Robert Calb, Assistant Secretary, Anthony J. Delarata, Assistant Treasurer, Donald Byrne, and First Battalion Delegate Lawrence Adelka, I don't think he's here. Anyway, gentlemen, if you could do the following. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will protect and defend the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the State of New York, and the laws and ordinance of the Village of Garden City. Further, I will abide by the bylaws, code, and general orders of the Garden City Fire Department, and that I will at all times carry out the duties assigned to me as an officer of the Garden City Fire Department, and that I will at all times strive to protect lives and property entrusted in my care to the best of my ability. So help me God. By the powers vested in me as Fire Commissioner of the Village of Garden City, I declare you duly installed. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Okay, so congratulations.
Congratulations.
Want me laying across the middle?
Yes. Permission granted. Thank you all for your service and enjoy. Okay, this time we'll move on to the quick resonant comments. This is intended for anyone who's come tonight, can't stay for the meeting, will need to leave, and would like to just take a moment to share something with the Board of Trustees. Those, these comments are limited to a minute each. So if you'd like to come up with a quick resonant comment, just state your name and address at the podium.
Well, first of all, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening, Mayor. Congratulations to the new elected trustees. We look forward to your service and the betterment of our village. My name is George Garden. I live at 395 Stewart Avenue. I've been a resident of Garden City for thirty-five years, and I was a former department surgeon for the Garden City Fire Department, which is so appropriate that I'm speaking tonight. Basically, what I want to say is that we would like to engage with the village again. We performed a service that was of utmost importance to our members, and the fact is, we provided a convenience. We were able to come onsite here to the village where I live and perform the examinations with a high quality and of utmost importance. I am the current Medical Director for the Nassau County Fire Academy EMS Academy, when New York City Police Surgeon honorary, also Police Surgeon for Freeport-Linburg and formerly for Garden City. So I look forward to being able to engage with the board and to try to service people that protect our community, our firefighters. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, in the room, any other quick resonant comments? Yes.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Halyen Lee Puma, and I am the Representative of Alexander House Residences condominium on 105 Seventh Street in Garden City. We recently received a notification from the Village of Garden City Department of Public Works stating that a recent inspection of the sidewalk and a driveway apron or drop curb adjacent to your property indicates that the following is in need of replacement. So they're looking to reset the pavers at a exorbitant cost. However, we noticed that one of the trees on the block, they reset, they actually took down the trees and then reset the pavers but did not do so on one of the trees. And that tree is a linden tree, which is known to have their roots uprooted, and that is the cause of the pavers being uneven. So we would like to address this issue with you this evening.
Have you contacted the Building Department?
We've contacted the Village of Public Works. They are going to get an arborist out there, schedule it to look at it, as well as have the engineer come back as well. But we are, we feel that this is not warranted because it is due to the rooting of the tree, which was installed by the Village of Garden City.
Alright, so thank you. We'll wait to hear from the Building Department. It sounds like they're gonna go take a look. So.
Okay, I just want to make you aware of it and how our feelings are about the matter.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other quick resonant comments? Anyone in the room?
Good evening, Mayor and Trustees. Karen Green Garden, 395 Stewart Avenue. I just wanted to take an opportunity, just a light moment, to just publicly recognize the librarian from the village. I did this on the Garden City group. I was so delighted. I didn't think I'd be able to take part in the eclipse phenomenon and came upon, couldn't find glasses anywhere, and said, let me just try the library. And there there was this wonderful program with chairs and flyers and glasses, and it was really, it was really thrilling. And I know you hear sometimes a lot of things that may be, you know, in government not great, but I wanted you to just know that it was really great. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Malagon is in the room, and I will, I have heard many compliments, so thank you for the great job on the solar eclipse. Any other quick comments?
I'll be quick. Hi, how are you? Steven Shoemaker-Poplar. Just three things quickly. First, I had a question about the zoning board and variance approvals because I didn't make it to the meeting, I think, last week, but somebody was asking for automobile repairs, and I was just curious if there's any oversight when those variances are given out because obviously, in automobile shop and vehicle transporters, all those kinds of things, I, that was my question there.
Village Council will respond.
Where's my phone? I don't know.
I think you're referring to a case that was on the zoning board calendar last, this Tuesday.
Yeah.
It was not for an auto repair shop. This is a building on Commercial Avenue. They will not be using it for auto repairs. It's basically for detailing, wrapping automobiles. There'll be no auto repairs.
Yeah, no, I just, I work with actually the five largest vehicle shippers globally, and I just know a lot about moving vehicles, whether they're registered salvage vehicles or if they have license plates on them. Questions like that, I was just wondering. It's no big deal. I was just curious about it. And then the other two things. One, the green spaces are a great thing. So Paul Blake, thank you. And I know, Michelle, you're involved with that. So I was wondering, if you want to get trees planted in front of properties that aren't actually owned by residents, for example, on Clinton Road on some of those properties, how do you go about doing that?
Mr. Blake?
Mr. Shoemaker, I believe you already submitted an email with a request to my department. We will forward that over to our arborist, Mr. Umanna. He will take a look at the sites, and he will determine which areas may want, need trees, or should have trees. We do have to remember, there are still a lot of houses on Clinton Road that have residents in them, and residence always has the, has the right to accept or refuse a tree in front of their home.
Yeah, yeah, I was really referring to that long stretch of road up, closer to Old Country Road, because I know there were some issues with garbage there, and it was actually, it's the adjacent property owner, I guess, but it's the village that owns the adjacent property, so.
The garbage issue is garbage blowing over from Roosevelt Field, and we are attempting to create a solution with the owners of the mall. If we can't do that, we're gonna put up a snow fence all the way back on, right on the edge of their property, stop the stuff from blowing over.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
And the last thing is just the trucks. I just want to urge, you know, there's a direct correlation between truck volume and property values. So if somebody could figure out how to ban trucks from every road possible, it would really increase the overall GDP for the village, and you'd be putting money right in people's pockets. So something to think about. I know there's a study going on with the truck traffic and all that, but if somebody can figure out how to decrease truck volumes, I think people would like you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other quick comments in the room?
If I could just piggyback on Blaine's comment that she made about the summons that we got. The violation says it's.
I'm sorry, sir. I'm sorry, sir. Just a name and.
Name and address.
Robert Sorrenti, 105 Seventh Street, Alexander House. First of all, does anybody know about this violation given out to everybody on Seventh Street? Yes.
The Building Department, I'm sure, is aware of everything that was. I'm sorry, DPW.
Okay, could you tell us, explain to us what this is about?
So the violation notice is in accordance with the village code that a certain property owners are responsible to maintain their sidewalk areas, which include the pavers on Seventh Street.
And that's it?
That's it.
But are you familiar with the thirty days? If we don't get this done in thirty days?
Yes, that's in accordance with the village code as well.
What happens after thirty days? Do we have a hearing? Do we have any rights?
There's no hearing after thirty days. The village will come in and do the work if you have not secured a permit with a private contractor, and we will do the work and bill you accordingly.
So we have no rights?
So as far as, this is actually an issue that's come oftentimes before, and there has been discussion, and we can discuss further, the notification, making sure, I thought we, there was some discussion about the notice time, perhaps extending that. So you can be in touch with.
One other quick thing.
One other quick thing, the.
You're off.
The process is the same as if you were homeowner in a single-family home. So you're not being singled out. This is the, the years-long process that we've had here in the village.
No, I fully understand that, but what I'm saying is, we're a co-op condo, right? We have a board just like this board. We have to present it to the board. We have to discuss it with them, do an assessment if necessary, and do the work. This takes, we just got this notice maybe seven days ago. We don't have enough time to do this within thirty days. So you're telling me in thirty days, we're gonna get hit with this?
This would be, I'm sorry, said the Building Department, DPW. You can contact DPW and they'll talk to you further about it. Have you gone, you're scheduled to go take a look, right? Is that what?
When people call, the engineers will go out and meet with you and show you everything that's wrong. As far as I know, there's no provisions in the code to allow an extension on this time.
I just don't find that to be fair, and I don't think anybody here, but all residents, or all.
But I just want to say, as I mentioned, that pursuant to the root of the tree, which was responsible by the village, this is the reason why the paper, not anything. That's not really the responsibility of the property owner. It's the village's responsibility for planting a tree, a linden tree that was known to uproot, and that's our issue, and I don't know how we can address that to inform the thirty days. That is the issue.
That's, again, discussed at length at many board meetings because we've had the same issue, and the residential properties, the same issue has arisen.
And what happened with those, if you don't mind me asking?
And what?
What happened at those meetings with those discussions? Was it?
The policy is, it's the property owner's responsibility to replace.
The, the terms were not changed. If I can make a suggestion, maybe just reach out to DPW tomorrow, plead your case. I live in a condo as well, and we would have an emergency meeting, and I understand that the time limit is short, but our hands are somewhat tied here.
Alright, I'll do that. Get in touch with them. Thank you.
Nice. Any other quick comments? Okay, we'll move on then to comments from, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Yes.
Okay. Mickey King, 128 Weatherill Road. I love this town, by the way. So thank you all for doing a wonderful job. As a resident and a small business owner, I've been in the restaurant business my entire life, so I know how hard it is to run a restaurant, and survival of restaurants is really important for our community. I think that's why people come here. That's one of the reasons why I love being here so much. I don't like to eat outside my town. I like to stay right here, keep it at home. I'm asking that the restrictions for outdoor dining be lightened up a little on our local restaurants, especially with outdoor lighting. When we go out to eat, we want to make sure we're well lit, our servers can see our table get to us safely, and that, of course, I can see my surroundings when we're around us. Having made it through the pandemic, thankfully, we know how important outdoor dining was to my facility, and I know how important it is to the people here in my town. So I'm asking that the board can revisit Ordinance Code 160-1, which I believe is all the way back from nineteen ninety-seven, so I was pretty young back then. Ninety-six? Oh, ninety-six, thanks. That it gets revisited to be a little bit more business-friendly, to help our restaurants thrive in the summertime, because I don't want people going to the beach. I want people eating here.
Thank you. So actually, when I got to my point, I was gonna share, I don't know if you saw the announcement, the village announcement on the outdoor dining that just went out yesterday?
Didn't see it.
Okay, so we'll get to that.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Welcome. Any other quick comments? People who are unable to stay for the meeting, who wanted to say something quickly?
How you doing? Thomas Greco, I'm representing Gomolby's 980 Franklin Avenue. Build up his comment. We received a notice in the mail that we had to remove the outdoor lighting, along with a lot of the restaurants, and I can understand, you know, the concerns about the safety issue, but the lighting is very poor back there to begin with, so, you know, we didn't, doing it, we didn't think would be a major issue. And then we also received an email from buildings, you know, as far as outside dining goes. Building up his comment, I mean, I don't see anybody complaining about it. It's, I, I don't, I don't understand why it would be an issue. They bring up safety issues, more lighting would be better. If the lighting has to come down, something has to be done in the parking lot. It's amazing that, you know, that you guys haven't had more problems to begin with, with the, with the lighting that you currently have in those parking lots. That's it. I just want to.
I had no idea the next time I saw it.
Alright, any other quick comments from anyone in the audience who can't stay for the meeting? Okay. You had to put on, you put on your microphone.
Loud enough. Just a quick comment. We're gonna try everything we can to work with the business owners in town. We all know how difficult it is to run business and pay the bills and take care of your customers, and we want to get more friendly in regards to dealing with the business owners in town, but yet doing what's best for the residents of the town safely. Everybody has the same set of rules to work from, and they have a clear understanding of what those rules are. But obviously, some flexibility as well, especially when it comes to that thirty days. In my opinion, again, we should be working with the business owners, even though, you know, John is in a tough position following codes. Obviously, you gotta follow the codes and the rules. But we also have to work together and with the business people, and, and hopefully, we can continue to do a little bit better job than that. Okay? Thanks, guys.
Right. We're gonna get to the, if there are no other quick comments, we'll get to the reports from the department heads, beginning with Mr. Barone.
Alright, good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees. DPW will be covering five items on the agenda this evening. I'd like to direct your attention to item number 1A under Finance. It's a request to transfer seventy thousand dollars to the Library Ground Improvements. This transfer is needed to install new parking lot lighting in the library parking lot prior to repaving the parking lot. This includes additional lighting to increase light levels in the parking lot, new concrete bases, wires, poles, and luminaires. Item 1B is a request to transfer one hundred eighty thousand dollars to road and paving repairs to install a new sidewalk on the east side of Cherry Valley Avenue from Sixth Street under the overpass and connecting to the existing sidewalk at Stewart Avenue. This transfer is needed to make this a cash expense, so we are eligible to receive CREST grant funding. Item 1C is a request to transfer seventy-five thousand dollars to curb sidewalk and road improvements for concrete and pavement repairs in front of the community park pool. This work involves the replacement of a concrete sidewalk located in front of the pool area. It is, it also includes bringing the ADA ramp at the entrance into compliance and adding a drop curb to assist with pool deliveries. Additionally, restoration of the asphalt pavement in the parking lot is necessary due to the unstable material it was built on, resulting in major depressions that need to be properly restored. Under Public Works, item number eleven is a request to accept the CREST grant in the amount of one hundred eighty thousand dollars to be used for the new Cherry Valley Avenue sidewalk that was discussed in the previous item. Item number twelve is a request to transfer seven thousand nine hundred dollars and to approve a proposal submitted by Metro Express to power wash the sidewalk paving areas on Seventh Street between Franklin and Hilton. The work will turn the corners onto Franklin Avenue, up to the parking lot entrance on the north side, and the railroad tracks on the south side. A similar item for Franklin Avenue will be presented on the May ninth BOT agenda. That's all the items I have this evening. Happy to answer any questions.
Just one quick one, John, and if this is better answered by Ralph, if you could just remind folks what the, what the CREST situation is and how long we've been working on that.
So the, the CREST grants are grants that were given to the village by Senator Thomas. There are three CREST grants active right now. One is for police vehicles. The commission was the first to put one in when Senator Thomas met him at last year's, it was the Police Night Out, I believe, at the pool. And after that, I put a request in for the hundred eighty thousand dollars for the sidewalk along Cherry Valley, which will marry Cathedral and Sixth Street. And the third one is for a new bus for the Recreation Department. Is it fifty-four pass or forty-five, forty-four passenger bus? And Senator Thomas said yes to all three. They were all in different stages of processing. One of the reasons this transfer is occurring tonight is because the grants need to be funded by cash. They can't come from bonding, and since the work is gonna be done under the. road program, which is bonded, we're transferring to cash so we can apply for the grant. So they're all, once we get past the application to the CREST program, they assign someone to us from DAZI, the Dormitory Authority of the State of New York, and then we just supply all the background they need, and the funding will be submitted by check or wire in the future.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Barone.
Aside from the items that Mr. Barone has spoken about, there are no other finance items tonight.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Giavennelli.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees. The Building Department has no items on the formal agenda this evening, but I just want to go over the work performance for the month of March for the Building Department. The performance for the month of March, there was 114 building permits issued, there was 157, 157 building inspections were formed, 30 complaints were addressed, and 262,000 was collected in revenue. That's all I have, Mayor. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I just have a question. Giuseppe, what was the bulk of the 30 complaints? Did it entail anything in particular, like somebody building a pool, or, you know?
Various complaints. Some were on fences, some were on, some were on pools, some were on equipment, some were on basketball hoops, various questions, and, you know, we had the response to, but most of it addressed, and a few are being addressed at the moment.
And an update on my favorite topic?
It's funny you ask that. We just received the drawings, actually. I'm actually reviewing the drawings, and I'll have it to the board hopefully by tomorrow.
Excellent.
All right, so it's good news. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Giavennelli. Mr. Blake?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Recreation has several items on the agenda this evening, beginning with number nine, which is the acceptance of the aforementioned CREST grant. Authorization is requested to accept the grant in the amount of $145,000 to be used for the purchase of a new 44-passenger bus for the Recreation Department. Moving down to award of bids, number 13, this is a renewal of bid for sodium hypochlorite, which is the liquid chlorine that we use at the swimming pool. Authorization is requested to renew for the first time at the same prices and under the same conditions with Tortorella Autochem, Hampton-based, New York, for liquid chlorine at a cost of $2.80 per gallon. This is the same price as last summer, and it's very beneficial to us to renew this bid, as chlorine has gone up about 20% across the board. This is the first of three possible renewals for this item. Number 14, renewal of bid, again, this one for horticultural and athletic field products. Authorization is requested to review for the first time at the same prices and under the same conditions with the Long Island Cauliflower Association in Riverhead for grass seed and plant fertilizers on an as-needed basis. This is the first of three possible renewals, and the prices are the same as last summer. And finally, on the formal agenda, number 15, award of bid for senior exercise equipment. Authorization is requested to award the bid for senior exercise equipment to CompAn Inc. of Austin, Texas, a low bidder, at a cost of $42,956.82. Funds are available in the Recreation Capital account. I'd like to touch on three other quick items, if I may. It's got to be spring, because Monday, pool registration is going to begin. Starting on Monday, April 22, residents can register online if you have a recreation password, or you can register in person at the Recreation Office. A little later in May, starting on the 13th, you'll be able to go to the pool office and register there as well. Next Friday, April 26, Arbor Day will be celebrated, and we're going to be planting a beautiful new Norway spruce on the Village Green. This tree is being planted in the hope that it's going to grow tall and strong and will one day become the Village Christmas tree. We had two beautiful spruces out on Village Green and in front of the fire department, and we lost them many years ago, and they were never replaced, and the tree we light now for Christmas is less than attractive. So we're hopeful of bringing back a beautiful Christmas tree for the residents. And finally, this week, at the annual New York State Recreation Park Society Annual Conference, Recreation Department was awarded the New York State Recum Park Society Program of Merit Award for our Adult Special Needs Program. And special recognition needs to go out to former Assistant Superintendent Sandy Young, Recreation Supervisor Felicia Lavalio, and Recreation Attendant Cam Casey for their hard work in planning, implementing, overseeing this great program. It's a great award for the village to receive, and we're all very proud that we got it. That's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Could you elaborate a little the senior exercise equipment? What will that be, and where will it be?
It will be installed directly behind the senior center, kind of to the northwest side of the property. It is three pieces of specialized equipment, and it is designed to assist seniors with their balance and mobility. The equipment can be used by a senior by themselves, it comes with panels on how to use them, and we will be integrating it into our exercise programs that Felicia runs at the Senior Center. Important to note that Felicia has been in on the design of the project from the day that we started it. So it's, it meets with her approval, she is looking forward to getting it, and it's going to be a positive program for the residents of the village.
Great, thank you. The other thing, if you could update everyone, the fields, topic of much discussion, and we have the fields closed off, and I know there was, you know, the village had committed to organic, and recently, there was a discussion with Recreation and EAB, which I thought was a great, and EAB representative regarding steps we needed to take to really get the fields where they need to be, if you want to just update the village on that.
Sure. Real quickly, we've been on organics at St. Paul's now, going into our fifth year. We are on the organic program at Community Park on our second year. We're seeing a much better result at Community Park, and that's partly because it does not get quite as much play as the fields at St. Paul's do. They get pounded on relentlessly. One of the major problems at St. Paul's is we get a large amount of crabgrass popping up in the summertime, and the crabgrass is so dense that it actually chokes out the good grass that we're planting. So we talked about it for a long time, and we've decided this year, on the closed area, we have applied a pre-emergent product that will stop the crabgrass from popping up. It has to be left alone for about six weeks, but from that point on, we can go back to our overseeding and fertilizing program. We're hopeful that by the fall, we'll have grown some really nice grass in that closed area. The rest of the fields are still under organic treatment, and we don't plan on doing anything else to those fields until late in the summer, when most of the activity is over, when we'll be looking to put down a post-emergent to kill the crabgrass on those areas. And then we will be opening up the closed area in the fall and closing off another area. And we're going to be on about a one-year cycle, closing down about a third of the field each year. We are seeing better improvement on the turf at St. Paul's. The program is working. We've gotten good cooperation from all of the athletic groups. We've asked them to stay off certain areas of the field, and they've been very good about working with us. We have also, for the first time in a long time, started closing the fields when the rain is too heavy. You would think it's common sense, but sometimes it isn't. So we've done that twice already this year. And we also sodded some of the goal areas on some of the soccer and lacrosse fields in the hopes that that turf would knit in and make a better playing surface for the kids, and also start to spread as it grows. That's where we are in the fields.
Thank you for that update.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Nice shirt, Paul. Frightened things up a bit, huh?
Thank you.
Paul, just to comment on the program that you spoke to, the Development to Disabled Adult Program that you have. So I've attended that. It is a wonderful program. I give you guys a lot of credit for it. Two, two things I would add to that is, one is, I wouldn't say it's surprising, but it may be to some, the number of participants we have, right? So it is a program that clearly is popular and speaks to a need that we have, and I would ask because of that, that we really look at expanding some of that. So we have a great challengers program that supports the youth, but for this population, you know, a lot of, once they become over 25, generally speaking, there's very, very little programming available. So anything we could do to expand that would be wonderful.
Absolutely, and it's, it's really nice and important to remember that this program started because we have several special needs adults that work in our department. And in interacting with them, you find out, what do you like to do? You know, one of our guys in maintenance, he loves to go to Islander Games, and Katie over at the Senior Center, she loves music and she likes dancing, and they expressed that there weren't a lot of opportunities for them to do this. So way back six or seven years ago, before I came back to the village, they had started this program, and it's really a labor of love. We don't assign people to work at this program. The people that work there from our department, they do get paid, but it's voluntary. The people that do it want to do it, and that's part of what makes it special. But I absolutely agree with you, Judy. Nothing we'd like more than to expand it.
Paul, good evening. Vinnie, well done. That's all right. So my son Paul spent a bunch of time over the last two weeks just going around town and trying to identify in some stuff, John, as well. And you guys have been great and very receptive, and just trying to get the town back in tip-top shape for the residents. And the, the fields, I've talked to a bunch of the sports guys, and yeah, they're, they're definitely anxious to try and get as much space as they can, obviously, for the kids to play, but the fields have to be rested, it's simple as that, if you continue to overwork them. And I do think we just have to look at, at giving the fields to, to other people from out of town, even though they might be paying, if it means damaging the fields and having to do this over and over and over again. So kind of having a full, broad overview of the, the amount of work and time these fields are getting from, from just a lot of people playing on the fields. And the rain issue is definitely a big one. So it's great to hear that you guys are discussing that, and we should talk about that a little bit more. One of my favorite topics, Paul knows what's going on, I'm going to say, is the bathrooms in, in the, in the rec and in the park areas. A lot of people have came to me over the last, it's been, you know, a little while, and said, hey, Vinnie, can we, can we try and do something about getting them a little bit cleaner, obviously, for our residents and our kids and young housewives and stuff like that? And I think we're making some pretty good strides, getting that done and staying on top of that. So, you know, so we, we have the, the cleanest bathrooms in Nassau County, you know, for our, for our residents and our kids. So continue to, look forward to working with you guys, and thank you so much.
Absolutely. To the field rentals, it's important to note, we have eliminated a lot of the field rentals. There are very few outside groups that rent our fields, and most of them are not rented on the actual playing fields, they're rented on just some green space. And there, there are little kid programs, there are soccer stars, and we are not going to overrent the fields. That message was sent to us loud and clearly by the Board of Trustees last spring during our budget hearings, and we eliminated all of the summertime rentals. We aren't renting any more lacrosse tournaments, we aren't renting any more soccer tournaments. It is the bare minimum right now, and the people we rent to are longtime good customers, and we, we do try to maintain a balance. And thank you for the words about the restrooms, the maintenance staff has been working on, hard on that, and we know we can do better, and we're going to do better. Sure thing.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Commissioner Jackson?
There we go. Thank you, Mayor. I have number eight on the agenda. We're requesting authorization to send Officer James Gunnels to the Syracuse Bureau of Weights and Measures for New York State. When we, we do track, truck enforcement, a very important component is weight management and weight enforcement, and we are required twice a year to have the scales calibrated, and that's the only place in New York State that calibrates them officially, and we need that for vital for prosecution. I'd also like to give us, give out the stats for March for the Police Department. We had 2,115 service calls, 62 case investigations, 25 arrests, eight vehicle impounds, 144 calls on medical aid reports, 67 traffic accidents. We issued 1,976 parking tickets, 990 traffic tickets, and three appearance tickets. Also, you might see some activity this week by the high school. We were doing a campaign called No Empty Chair, and basically what it is, is we are enforcing rules in the vicinity of the high school for, to promote safety among our teenage drivers, our newer drivers. We are forcing speeding in school zones, restraint use among teenagers, cell phone and texting use, passing school buses, et cetera. Underrated drinking, too. Tomorrow, my youth officer, Detective Romeos, will be in our high school speaking to about 600 students about the dangers of driving and some of the mistakes we make, and hope to make their driving safer for themselves and the rest of the residents of the village and their families. That's all I have, if anybody has any questions.
Just as the Police Commissioner, I have the pleasure of working with Commissioner Jackson and getting his reports at 7:00 in the morning. He and I obviously have the propensity to do dawn patrol. And what is interesting about reading all of the reports is there is a lot more activity by the department than the residents appreciate. Just to give one example, is on April 15, the police officers who were at the high school issued 26 VTL, Vehicle Traffic Law summonses, 16 for speeding, one for, unfortunately, not, you know, DW, not DWI, but driving improperly and registrations. That is an important lesson, obviously, for the high school students. I did not bring with me the stats because in a prior week, the department did more enforcement over at Seventh Street. And I'm assuming most people who get their license can read, but obviously, for the number of individuals who are doing U-turns and don't know what a double yellow line is, and doesn't know what the sign is, and can't see the officer who is out there giving tickets, it is staggering, the misbehavior. And I do compliment the department and its officers for their vigilance, and I'm just speechless when I read the reports. But thank you, Officer Jack, Commissioner Jackson, and please tell your officers to keep up the good work.
Thank you, I will.
You're here.
Right. Thanks for everything you're doing and for that education with the high school, very important, so appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Jackson, just want to say a couple things. Number one, thank you for the good work. I know it's not an easy job. Nobody's ever happy, and, and, you know, that's just the way it goes sometimes. But in regards to Seventh Street, over the last, we chatted a little while ago, and the difference on Seventh Street, I feel like, is, is amazing, to the point where people are texting me and noticing how good a job you guys are doing, really cracking down on people who have just, could care less about the law, and just park wherever they want, whenever they want, handicap, double parking, U-turns, you know, running people over on this, you know, it's, it's, it's amazing what people will do. And it's great to see you guys really having a presence on Seventh Street and doing an amazing job on that, so I just want to compliment you guys and, and the boys for doing a great job, and keep it up. The second one is, is a big one over on my neck of the woods, which you, you kind of know what's coming, is with Clinton under major construction, and the truck issue and the noise issue over there. It's, you know, I know it firsthand because I live in that area. It's, it's a huge issue, and we've talked about it, and I know you guys are doing the best you can, and if you could just, for the sake of those residents on the east side, and especially on Clinton Road, and even in a block or so, I mean, the noise level over there is staggering with the trucks, and now with all the, the road being cut up, and it's going to be that way for, it looks like, at least nine months or a year. Any help we can from people that are just, again, either not obeying the truck laws at nighttime, coming down from, from north to south, and, and also, the trucks coming north, northbound at nighttime are just hauling, coming through there at 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning, and if they hit those divots, it's, it does sound like a mini explosion for people who are living within a block of Clinton, and it's tough to sleep as it is, it's really tough when you have those guys. So any help you can be to, 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 to really monitor that at nighttime for those residents on the east side, they would really, really appreciate that. So thanks for all the hard work, and I appreciate it, and keep up the good work.
Thank you, will do.
Thanks, Drew.
Commissioner?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. With the help of Village Astoria in Belma, and my partner Ariel Ronenberger, we have five more park designations tonight. Custer Park, Grove Park, Nassar Haven Park, and two with, two green areas that we've made up names for. One called Grove Park North, which is a rectangular piece on the east side of Grove Street, sort of opposite from Brook Street, and the other one, which-
And the other one, which we've called Grove Street South, or Grove Park South, is the park area or the strip east of Grove Street, starting south of the middle of Pine Street, going all the way down to the southern border of the village. So those five park designations are on the calendar tonight under number four. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your work on that. And it's a, I think, an important mission we're on here, preserving the places where our children play while we move to Garden City. And I want to thank you and Trustee Fineran and former trustee Charlie Kelly, who really got this moving, and thanks for all the work on that.
Mayor, if I may have a second?
Sure.
I think, Gary, that probably brings us to around 13 to 15 with these two new parks at Grove, since we've started addressing the issue maybe six to seven months ago. So I've worked with Gary, we've worked, we've walked the parks together. And I think this makes great sense for us and just recognizes our history and protects those lands. I add in, ban item, hopefully. And we will continue. There are a few other little things that we're going to be looking at. So again, Gary, thank you for your work. I think it's been well worthwhile.
Miss Mayor?
Sure.
Gary, yeah, great job on that. I think, again, preserving every little ounce of green grass we have in this town, Garden City, is all about trees and green space. And ironically, I use all of those three areas that you just mentioned to go for a run and a walk, because I live on Brook Street. So I go down Custer Park, go across the east side, switch over to the south. And they're lovely, they're beautiful. People, you know, a lot of people don't even know they exist, and they're beautiful trees. And again, it's just, it's things like that that makes Garden City a special place. And thanks for all your help on that, and same thing. Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, Mr. Swazi.
Good evening, Mayor, trustees, residents. Mayor, I have four things I want to talk about this evening. First is I want to welcome our deputy village treasurer, who's pinch hitting for Ms. Boo this evening, welcome. The second is I want to officially recognize and thank outgoing chief, the Fire Department Chief Pern, finally, and welcome incoming Chief Totten and all the chiefs. And I want to welcome back former chief Devin Moody, who's now reincarnated as the baby chief. I'm going to go backwards from the agenda items. I want to cover number 10, which is a library item. The board authorization requested to approve a transfer of funds to contribute contribution to the library from contingent to cover the increasing cost for VM software renewal. The cost of $4,932 in 2023. However, VMware was taken over by another company, and the new vendor has revised the cost formula, resulting in an unanticipated increase of $13,580. Just for general education, VMware is a virtualization and cloud computing software provider based in Palo Alto, California. VMware is a standalone server virtualization software. It allows you to take the physical servers that you had, bring them up to the cloud, and those operating systems can operate together in a virtual environment, and you can manage, not only manage them virtually, but you can also share the resources, the RAM, the storage, and the computing power. So it's a great benefit to the library. We use it here as well. I just want to let you know that as we're addressing this cost now, because the contract expires on April 20th, we haven't had sufficient time with our big IT vendor to find an equivalent, if possible, find an equivalent or better provider of this VM software. But we're all looking for it, and we will switch over to a less costly one if one is available. The second item is something that's near and dear to me, and it was brought to us by Senior Kira O'Leary from the high school. She is attempting to receive the Gold Award.
Actually, can I cut in? She's going to come and speak to us. Can we let her share a little bit? I wasn't sure at what point I was going to invite her up to the podium, but we have Kira O'Leary in the room, who's going to tell us a little bit about her project.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and trustees. My name is Kira O'Leary, and I live on 225 Whitehall Boulevard. I'm here to talk about my Girl Scout Gold Award, which is equivalent to the Eagle Scout Award, if you don't know. I'm proposing that veteran flagpole banners are hung on 7th Street by the library on Memorial Day to Veterans Day. There would be five light posts with two banners on each, so 10 in total. What you have in front of you, this, is a mock-up from Fast Signs. The veteran on the picture is Tom Dearline, who's a resident of Garden City. On the real banner, there will be the actual dates of service and no spelling mistakes.
Thank you. I think this is a wonderful, wonderful project you're doing, and thank you for doing it.
Here, this was done in Coral Place as well. They had veteran banners on all the different poles. So I think it's really, really great that you're doing that. We had someone similar in Coral Place doing that, and it was very nice. I was able to look at my dad up there. So it was really, really good, and I'm glad you're doing that. Congratulations.
And Kira also has started up a club at the high school. And I will keep you, but do you want to tell people what you did with that?
Yeah, so I started the veterans' club, where we have invited local veterans to basketball games, and I've recognized them during halftime with little ceremonies and given them, like, little bouquets of flowers to recognize them for their service.
Excellent.
Thanks for what you're doing.
Good luck.
Sorry to cut in like that, but...
I want to bring Kira back every week I have to speak, so. So anyway, Mayor, this is a program as Deputy Mayor Chester said. Glencov has had this for three years now at the library. I've had my father's banner up there three times now. But about people like Kira, who obtained this highest award in scouting, not only are they great, outstanding citizens today, but they keep, they stay so in their adult life. So very proud that she's doing this. So with that as a backdrop, the board authorization is requested for approval of the installation of the five double-sided brackets on light poles on the south side of 7th Street, stretching from Hilton Avenue to Cathedral Avenue near the Garden City Public Library, for the hanging of veteran flags by CJ Flag and Sun Inc. at a total cost of $937.50. Funding is available.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Any questions, we're happy to take them.
Any questions?
Thank you, young man. Keep up the good work. I've been working with the lad over there over the last couple of weeks. And you know what? I'm enjoying working with you, and we're chatting a lot in the same way as with John and with Paul. Just trying to just tighten up a lot of different areas around town and work together and really make a difference. And the last thing I want to say is we need a lot more girls like Kira in this country and this town. Thank you.
Excuse me, Kira, that wouldn't be your mom next to you, would it? Must be proud.
Excellent. All right, thank you, Mr. Swazi. Village Clerk Gallic, I don't know if you want to comment on the inspector, village election inspectors, or if Mr. Swazi wanted to? Is there anything to be?
So we have one item on the agenda from the clerk's office. This is for a supplemental payment to the village election inspectors. As you know, we had quite a turnout this year at the election. We had a new program in place through the state of New York, which allowed for early mail ballots. With part of this program, we also had our inspectors inspect and count all the early mail ballots. So they're a little later than they all anticipated. We do pay them a flat fee, and we would like to propose paying them an extra supplemental to cover the extra hours. They were there as a thank you to keep them returning to help us with our village elections. We're lucky to have a great group that always shows up.
Thank you. All right, so one item. So number seven, we have the reappointment from our village justices. I don't know if there's any need to speak on that, Mr. Swazi? The independent contractors? I think it speaks for itself.
Yeah, it speaks for itself, Mayor. I have no comment on it.
All right. One thing I wanted to mention, if you haven't noticed, we have another resolution on the agenda today. So I don't know if we will, if you want to read that now or if we want to wait until after we vote on it?
I think...
Would you like to read it?
Sure.
All right, so this, I want to thank trustee Fineran for helping drafting this this year and last year. I'd also note, we're here for the third time, sitting as a board of trustees with a resolution opposing the gambling casino at the Nassau Hub. So we did that for the first time in 2022. All voted in favor of it. We had a contentious election and came back in 2023 with a new board and another resolution unanimous. And we're here tonight after yet another election with the board. And I am heartened to see that we are united still on this very important topic for our village. We had a recent election where every single one of the eight candidates came out in opposition to this casino project. So thank you, trustee Fineran, for working on this. If you want to share the resolution?
Certainly. And I'll read this quickly. Whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Garden City notes that the presence of a casino at the Nassau Coliseum Nassau Hub site would have a significantly negative impact on the quality of life within the village, which would be dramatic. And the placing of a, quote, "round-the-clock," unquote, 24/7 casino in the heart of Nassau County would permanently impact the character of the surrounding communities. And whereas, the board has received considerable input from residents across the village in opposition to the development of a casino at the Nassau Hub site. And whereas, the serious security issues that surround casinos are well-known, including DWI's, prostitution, drugs, human sex trafficking, compulsive gambling, and moreover, a severely negative impact on our village roadways, which are already overburdened with traffic. And whereas, the board urges the Nassau County Legislature and the Nassau County IDA to actively seek out development ideas which will enhance our communities. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the board, on behalf of the residents in Garden City, is adamantly opposed to a casino at the Nassau Hub site. And be it further resolved that the board urges the Nassau County Legislature, on the expected reintroduction of the issue, to reject the Las Vegas Sands Corp's request to secure the transfer and control of the lease agreements for the Nassau Hub and Marriott hotel sites, so as to facilitate a casino at that site. And urges the Nassau IDA to look towards developing appropriate uses of these properties, which will enhance Garden City and our surrounding communities, rather than negatively impact our collective quality of life.
Thank you. I just want to thank everyone. Thank you, trustee Fineran, everyone up here for your advocacy on behalf of our community, and for people in the audience who I see who have also been working hard to advocate on behalf of our community against this terrible idea. What we can do is we can make a motion to remove this from the consent calendar for a separate vote. Would you like to make that one?
Yes, so moved.
All in favor? All right, so we've removed the resolution for a separate vote. Does someone want to make a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make a vote, oh, sorry. I'll make a motion, we approve the resolution.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you, trustee Fineran, for your work on this again.
You're welcome, sir.
All right, so an item I wanted to address, which people may have seen online, we have beautiful weathers here, as is outdoor dining, something that is enjoyed by many residents. And we have, though, gotten some complaints on outdoor dining. And the board of trustees took the, saw it as a good time to take a look at our code to find out what the rules were on outdoor dining. And what we found was that the code was written in 1997, has not been updated since then, and is quite outdated. So what we have decided to do at this point is we are looking, and Judy Courtney is going to be leading the effort to address a new code, a comprehensive code, addressing outdoor dining, which we plan to have an effect before the 2025 season. It's going to take time, she'll speak to that in a moment. But in the meantime, we are going to be granting permits for outdoor dining through the last Sunday in November, consistent with the business practices of that establishment for outdoor dining last year. So we thought that was the best way to give this the attention that it needs. And I'll let trustee Courtney speak a moment to the plan there.
Thank you, Mayor. And just to add a couple of things. So the, when we realized how old the code was, right, it obviously pointed out that there's certainly a need for looking at how times have changed and residents' needs, business needs have changed as well. So I talked to Giuseppe today. I think we put a really good plan in place. And just so everyone knows, what we'll be doing over the next several months is looking at a couple of different things, right? We're going to be looking at what other villages do and seeing if we can learn something from them in terms of best practices. What are some things that maybe they did wrong that we don't want to do, et cetera? So we think it's a good opportunity to take advantage of this time, which is why we gave ourselves enough time to really look at things. Obviously, we'll be talking to members of the business community, to John Wilton at the Chamber, et cetera, to see what you all think is most important to you, what works for you, and then getting feedback from the residents as well, marrying it all together, and coming up with a new and revised code. And then we'll send that to the legal committee for review to put it in, you know, more formal code language. But just know that we're not going to wait until, you know, next March and all of a sudden say, here's the new code, you have to follow it. So we'll have time spent together to really pull it together in a way that makes sense and hopefully learns a lot from the COVID years and learns a lot from what we've done past the COVID years to put together a really great code where everybody wins. So that's our objective, and we will ensure that we have feedback from everybody who's involved. So thank you.
Thank you for taking that on, trustee Courtney. And as far as the lights which came up, and I'm not sure if any of the business owners are still here who were mentioning the lights, but when we decided to honor what was done in the past, we did check with the building department. And one thing that we had to address that we cannot allow are the lights that are being wrapped around the village trees. So that is why that was included in the statement. So that is the update on the outdoor dining. Do any other trustees? Actually, I believe you were going to make a comment on the promenades, trustee Fineran?
Yes, ma'am.
Another topic?
Yes, ma'am. Just one final note on the, on the outdoor dining. The time period within which the permits have been granted were sort of in April, May, and they ran through the last Sunday in November. So this year, the building department will be enforcing that the permit period will end on the last Sunday in November. I just wanted to make that quick point. With regard to the promenades, we decided as a board to change direction a bit. And we are going to ask, and we're going to pause, and we're going to ask the rec department to assist us in coming up with a program that celebrates families, kids, and seniors, not unlike myself. And our initial thought is to have a themed village festival monthly. We hope to benefit from John Wilton and the Chamber's expertise and the great work they have done over the last nine years. We're excited about the possibilities. The canvass is being painted now, so please stay tuned. We will be in front of you on a regular basis, hopefully soon. And we look forward to getting our first festival off the ground. Thank you.
Yes.
Mayor, I just want to make two comments, one on Judy's on the outdoor dining. So our goal as a board is, again, to work with the business community so we have clarity in regards to the rules. I think a lot of people over the last X amount of years have kind of lost track with COVID, everything else like that. And our goal is to make it clear and give people in the business world lots of time to adjust. So whatever we're going to do with the outdoor dining programs, that everybody has the same set of rules, follows the rules. It looks the same, it's going to be beautiful. It attracts more business to their establishments. And I think overall, it's going to be great. And it's just a matter of having a clear program. And we'll have time to do that. Judy's going to head it up, do a great job on that. We'll all assist her as best we possibly can. But I think overall, I think it'll be great for business, and I think it'll look great, and I think it'll encourage businesses to even take another step and make the town even more beautiful than it already is. So that's our goal with outdoor dining, with the promenades. I think a big factor with the promenades is trying to give the town back to the residents, who don't go out east and don't go away for the summer, to have them go out on Friday night and a Saturday night, have some peace and quiet, have a lovely dinner. on Friday night and a Saturday night, have some peace and quiet, have a lovely dinner, have some drinks with their friends and their families, and support the local bars and restaurants, and really come out and support them. Our goal is to make sure our businesses in town thrive and encourage all the residents who are around to go out on a Friday night and a Saturday night and really, you know, spend the few bucks we, we have left over, to pay all the other bills, and, and really support our, our local restaurants and bars. But given our residents who live especially on the, on the Franklin Avenues of the world and on Seventh Street, to be able to walk out of their apartment and just have a lovely dinner on a lovely Sunday evening, or a Friday evening, or a Saturday evening, without all the noise and some of the, the stuff that's been going on the last couple of years. So, that's our goal, and I think, I think people will actually end up loving it and, and enjoying it. And I think businesses will thrive, because I think people will come out and really support, and we encourage them, the bars, the restaurants in our town. So, thank you very much.
With regard to the notices of violation that were issued to the businesses on Seventh Street, they either have to be withdrawn, or the board give a direction to the Department of Buildings for a stay of enforcement until such time as the code has changed. The resolution that I submitted to the board on the 11th had that provision, in that during the non-operation hours, the, there was a requirement that all of the furniture, tables, benches be removed and brought back. So, quite candidly, we cannot allow Mr. Giovanni to be in between here and there, because if he, if a violation has been issued, it cannot be unrung unless we decide that we're going to withdraw it, or in fact, have a stay of enforcement. Accordingly, I suggest that the board issue a resolution confirming the stay of enforcement so that those businesses on Seventh Street who are affected and have received a notice of violation are comfortable in knowing that they can continue their operation without Damocles sword over their head.
I'll just ask Mr. Giovanni, I know I, I reached out to you about this, was it an order to remedy or a violation, and what is the action needed now?
So, at, at this time, they received an order remedy. They have to adhere to the order remedy. If they don't, then they go into, it turns into a violation. We give them some, and so, as per trustee Torino, yes, let's come up with a resolution for us to decide to put a hold on it and, you know, let them continue as they continued the previous year, and come up with the, the, the new going forward for 2025.
Just for clarity, because, so there wasn't actually no violations, and I spoke with Mr. Fishberg about this too, I believe a bit, no violations have been issued, there are orders?
Orders to remedy.
Orders to remedy.
Yeah.
And can they, can you now just notify them that you're withdrawing the order to remedy, or do you need a board vote on that?
Need a board vote on that.
All right, so I'll make a motion to authorize the building department to notify businesses that we're withdrawing the order to remedy.
Can I just make one quick suggestion, mayor? I have seen the list, and my recollection is, Mr. G, that there are three businesses that have a, a order to remedy, pardon me if that's the wrong word, for planters, and there are eight to nine that have potential violation situations with regard to lights.
String lights, yes.
I would, I would remove the, the lights. This, this resolution will not pertain to the violations or
That's correct.
The notice of remedy with regard to the lights, but only with regard to outdoor furniture and planters.
Understood.
Is that fair?
That has to apply to 148-14 of the code with regard to the furniture.
So, what would be the, would want a motion to authorize building department?
To, I think, to
You just made a motion, so if you withdraw your motion, we can make another one.
I'll withdraw that motion to
So, the motion that is
Yeah, let me just hear from Mr. Giovanni. So, which, remove the order, what exactly would you like the wording to be considering what was just brought to your attention by trustee Finneran and the lighting issue?
Yeah, so you, you're just, you're withdrawing the, the, the remedies that are pertaining to the outside hanging lights, not, not the planters, right? So, you're, you're approving the planters at this time, and you're, you're withdrawing the remedies as far as the, the planters itself, and you're keeping for the outside, outside lighting. So, most, if not almost all, I'll verify, have adhered to the outside lighting at this time. So, it's only quite, there's only a few that remain on that list of eight.
Should, would it be accurate to say withdraw the orders to remedy, consistent with the policy set forth at tonight's meeting?
Yes.
Would that cover it?
Yes.
Yes, the orders of remedy specified, the code provision that's issued under, the furniture issues are under, as you said, section 148-14. There'll be lighting, orders refer to that section, or any particular section?
I'm not sure if it's pertaining to that section, but that was noticed as far as hanging lights on village trees, which is not permitted for accessories on village trees. So, it could fall into accessories on village property.
How about, would it be appropriate a motion authorizing building department to withdraw all orders of remedy, consistent with the policy set forth at tonight's board meeting?
Which, which would include planters as well as the furniture, if there is a distinction between the two?
Right, it's going to be everything that the business had last year, we're saying you're allowed to have it again this year. So, if there's an order to remedy, it will be withdrawn, because we're now saying that's okay. Is that clear?
Mayor, I have one comment on that. Why don't we just put in that provision, just excluding the lighting?
That's really all I'm asking.
Okay, so we'll
It's all but, but the lighting, right? So, that provision is, is excluding the lighting that's being hung on village property, right? So, all this pertains to keeping the outside tables and chairs as previously approved, and then having the planters for the items that are in question as far as the, the restaurants that have these planters at this time.
Trustee Torino, why don't you redo your resolution that you've suggested earlier to all of us?
The resolution is that the Department of Buildings is to withdraw any notices of remedy with regard to any claimed violations of sections 148-14 with regard to furniture, chairs, and any planters. That said, withdrawal of the notice of remedy does not apply to any lighting that has been installed by any of the homeowner, any of the business owners with regard to being accessory structures on any of the village lights
Village trees.
Or their own plant, their own storefronts.
Yes.
Mr. Fishberg? Is that clear enough?
The lighting section of the code is 148-13. The furniture fixtures and signage section of the code is 148-14. Again, I don't know if your notices refer to specific code provisions, but this, what would work, I think, is staying any enforcement of violations with regard to section 148-14.
That's correct. I'm okay with that.
All right, do you want to redo it?
Not the whole thing.
Not the whole thing, just exactly
Just that section.
The short version is that the Department of Buildings is to withdraw any notices of remedy with regard to any violation by the businesses under section 148-14 that requires the withdrawal of all furnitures, planters, and chairs during non-operational hours.
So moved.
All in favor? That passes.
That's called making the sausage, folks. That's how the sausage is made.
Understood, thank you.
Any other trustee comments on any items?
I believe, Madam Mayor, that with regard to the items that I requested to be put on the agenda, that was submitted to the village clerk on April 11th, some of those items have already been addressed, but there are two items that should be addressed as new business, as submitted. One of which, and for that purpose, I am making a motion to suspend the board rules in order that we can put under new business the following item. A discussion by the Board of Trustees on the issues, merits, and objections related to reducing Stewart Avenue between Franklin Avenue to Clinton Road from three lanes to two, if warranted, and if an agreement by the Board of Trustees is reached, an appropriate directive be issued to the Department of Buildings. The second one would be the directive to the village clerk to separately restore to the village website under the tab, Welcome to Garden City, for each of the POA websites. I believe that we've already discussed the other item, which I submitted to the board with regard to the village promenades on Seventh Street. So, right now, there is a motion to suspend the rules to add those items to the new business agenda.
All right, I guess we need a vote.
We're voting on which now?
He wants to move them to another place in the agenda.
No, to put them on the agenda, mayor, because they were not put on the agenda when I submitted them on the 11th. So, therefore, to get them on the agenda, this is what we have to do.
One matter is a matter, a traffic commission matter, which I don't think we yet had a chance to
I would
Meet as the traffic commission to discuss. So, I don't think it would be appropriate, but I will let our Chair of the Traffic Commission address that.
Whether it is appropriate or not, Madam Mayor, under the board rules, any trustee has an opportunity and a right to put a matter on the agenda. Once it comes on the agenda, we as a board have a right to discuss it. If it goes on the agenda, and then subsequently it is adjourned to a traffic commission meeting, so be it. But as you well know, and have brought to our attention on many times, under the open meeting law, you cannot have a discussion unless it's noticed, and in fact, at a board meeting. So, there have been many individuals have raised the question with regard to the reduction in the size of Stewart Avenue from three lanes to two. So, if it goes on the agenda
I think you've called for a vote. I think we should be voting now.
I believe we should.
We can discuss it, there's no, this is on the trustee questions, comments, announcements, you, we can discuss the, the issue of the traffic.
I think we should just call a vote.
We can do that, or we can just discuss it if
Here nor there, really.
I'm, I'm ready to go.
So, all in favor? The mayor has to say that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? Okay, so, they are moved on to the agenda, so would you, you would like to discuss the
What happens is
Actually, I'm going to turn it off to Ed Finneran on the traffic
Mayor, on that issue, unless you put it on the agenda, those individuals that come here and want to speak cannot. That is the reason why it goes on the agenda, so that we can communicate with the residents, and they can communicate to us.
Let me make a suggestion. It would appear to me, and Gary, correct me if I'm wrong, that we should take care of the rest of the calendar, because this would be in addition to the calendar, which would be after, this would be in discussion items. Is, is that fair, if, if you look, Gary? And that we could then take that
This is a new agenda item, therefore, it goes under new business.
That's what, that's what you've done by suspending the rules and adding it to the agenda.
Okay.
Add it to the agenda.
Okay. So, we're not at new business yet, correct? Okay, so, you still have citizen comments?
Actually, yeah, no, we're still on trustee comments.
Well, let's just do it
We're not even to the formal agenda yet. So, any other trustee comments? No, because that's later on, that's down in the formal agenda now. So, any other trustee comments on anything? Yes.
Yes, I do have a comment. In relation to trustee Torino's discussion trustee had, I think it's a great idea that any item, that any trustee, we have seven trustees, that want to put something on the agenda for discussion, you know, not directive, discussion, I think it's a great idea, because I think it's the only option we have to sit up here and explain our views as trustees to the public and everybody that's watching on that screen right there, and out here, and know where we stand on different ideas. And, you know, the best thing about democracy is, we all have different opinions, we can agree, we can disagree, but the public knows exactly where we stand in public, and it's not behind closed doors, because we can't do behind closed doors because of all the different laws and regulations. So, to me, I think any trustee that wants to put something on the agenda should be respected for that, and it should be put on the agenda, unless there's an absolute crazy reason why we can't. And I think discussion is great, disagreement is great, and the public knowing exactly where we stand on everything is great. So, I think it's a win-win, and I think moving forward, I'd like to, you know, to, to have, if I want something on the agenda, or anybody else in this, on this board wants something on the agenda, I think it should be respected, and I think it should be put on the agenda. That's my opinion, and I think it's just great for everybody.
So, just to be clear, I've, I've always advocated for exactly that, and I did put on the agenda for discussion, the Welcome to the Website topic, which we will be discussing. At any board meeting, you can always move to suspend, to put something on for a vote, there is that option. I'm not quieting anything. The two items I did not put on the agenda was because we had trustees working on resolutions, which we were able to get to on those topics. So, we have an outdoor, we had an announcement on the outdoor dining. So, I think we actually were able to move that forward more quickly with the summer beginning than if we had waited to discuss it and then tried to figure it out after the meeting. We also were able to get to, to move forward today with the promenade or festival announcement. So, those were two items that I was not trying to keep anyone from working at all, I was actually trying to help everyone move forward on important items to us. As far as the traffic, there is a, we have a traffic commission, and we have a Chair of the Traffic Commission, and there has been, there have been many meetings which I have attended, there's been a lot of information on traffic, and I spoke with the Chair of our Traffic Commission, and he is, I know, working with the new members, he has a brand new traffic commission, he is the only returning person on the traffic commission. So, in speaking with the Chair of the Traffic Commission, he would like to get you all up to speed on what we learned, what the engineer report said. I don't know if everyone's watched, I think it's recorded, the meeting that we had in the library, I don't know how many here, I know Ed and I were both at it, I don't know many, how many were here at that meeting on Stewart Avenue, but I think the discussion should follow watching the meeting. I'm not against discussion, but for us to sit up here and discuss something after we got, had professionals study and report on it with not, without having seen those, I didn't really see. You can make a comment on it, as you see, you can, you can comment on anything at any time during the meeting, but having spoken with our Chair of the Traffic Commission and realizing how complex some of these traffic issues are, and the great efforts that have gone into moving us forward on traffic safety in the village, I was really giving the courtesy of letting the Traffic Commission, which is where this work gets done, and then the Traffic Commission brings it to us as the Board of Trustees. So, to have the Board of Trustees jump ahead of the new, newly elected Traffic Commission, for the most part, before they've had a chance to meet and educate themselves, I didn't think was, so I'm not trying to quiet anyone, I thought that was the best process
Madam Mayor
For our Traffic Commission.
There is nothing in the board rules that gives you that authority. Merely because you think there is another way of doing it, that doesn't cut it. We have board rules that say it can be put on the agenda. So, you took it unilaterally to say there's a different way of doing it. That's just not how it happens.
So, trustee Torino, it's on the agenda, here's your item, you can run with it, I'm not sure, you're looking to try and make this some sort of a
No, what I am trying to do is make sure that in the future, you understand and appreciate that with all the trustees, whoever puts an item on the agenda, it goes on the agenda. If there's any discussion about it, so be it. If the, if the matter is then adjourned, as, in my conversation with trustee Finneran, I said, it's real simple, it goes on the agenda as it's supposed to do, per the board rules. If there is no discussion by any of the residents, or by any of the trustees, and an application is made to adjourn it to the next Traffic Commission application is made to adjourn it to the next traffic commission meeting, that's the proper procedure, not to keep it down and not to have no discussion. That's my comment.
You've said your piece. Did you want to carry on with the traffic? It's on, yep.
So, I think the intention of this really was to, is to foster open discussions and I think I really appreciate, you know, all the statements and things that was, things were that, that were discussed, but I do think it's fair for other board members to have the opportunity to put them on the agenda and since we discussed them anyway, I think it would have been the same results where we discuss it with the items being on the agenda and I think it gives a fair chance for everyone to share their ideas and thoughts. So, moving forward, I think it, it benefits the, you know, everyone to have the items on the agenda so we can just openly discuss them.
I hundred percent agree and you're welcome to put items on the agenda, so. But we now have this on the agenda, the traffic, so I don't know if trustee Fineran wants to lead on it.
No, I, I certainly do want to comment and I, I've chatted with everyone who's on the committee, on the Traffic Commission, but I, I just, I'm a little bit of a stickler for procedure, so I don't know whether this is the right time or not, or should we just take care of it? Maybe we'll just take care of it. And Vinny and, and Bruce and Jessica and, you know, I think we all agree with you and I think open, fun, heated, if necessary, discussion is, is always good. My position on discussing in detail, the, the specifically with regard to Stewart Avenue is that there was a lot of time and, and in effect money spent in hiring Creighton Manning to do a, a pretty comprehensive study on the benefits, the pluses and the minuses of doing, of engaging in a road diet strategy on Stewart Avenue. So, my position was before the meeting was let's table it until the traffic commission and that would be trustees Muldoon, Harrington and, and Ms. Courtney and get them educated on all of the time that, that Creighton Manning had spent and, you know, we'll let the chips fall where they may. It's a, it's a, an involved program, it is an impactful program, but it is part of what, what I believe is, is a traffic calming strategy that we're employing throughout the entire village. So, I have views, there are opposing views and we're talking about how we might be able to tweak the plan. So, we've just had a little bit of difficulty in planning the, the meeting with Creighton Manning. The other trustees are invited to participate as well. So, my, my only point is I would postpone it at, at least until the ninth. Hopefully, we can get everybody in front of Creighton Manning. We can have a more intelligent discussion because then you'll appreciate all the time that we have spent on that issue and several other issues and how they're all intertwined into traffic calming and traffic safety.
I think that one of the reasons why this has come up so much is we are very limited as a board with this open meetings law and a lot of times there's controversial topics, whether it's the promenades or it's the traffic or you, you name it, what we're talking about. And it's very hard for us, especially since everybody's been elected, to really get together and talk about it. And I think one of the reasons why trustee Torino and Muldoon and Jessica Trye have brought this up this evening is because we, we want to, we want to talk about it, we want to hear everybody's opinion and it's very limited and there's multiple phone calls and, but it's, you, sometimes you get a lot more when you talk about it as a group and I also think a lot of times we want to hear what you have to say. And I think we also want you to know that if we're really quiet, you think we're not doing anything or we're not even engaging in the topics or, you know, paying attention to it and the concerns. So, I think that this is very important that we do have more items on the agenda and we make it, it doesn't mean we always have to vote on it, but, or approve it, but we want to put things up for discussion purposes and then let the, and then we can say, let's adjourn it till we have more information, but we really, we want to engage you more and we want to engage each other more and that's what this is all about.
And I, I would, I would add, having sat in the audience for years and listening to various boards talk and everything, which is always appreciated, right? And I agree, Michelle, the, the degree to which conversations can occur in different ways is, is tricky to say the least, but I always felt a little hollow when I would leave because I'm like, what do you really think? Right? Or, you know, where are we with this? And it would always seem the many board meetings were a little bit perfunctory, right? They kind of had the agenda and they voted and then they, you know, moved forward and we had the next discussion. And I never really got a sense unless it was at a P O A meeting where a trustee attended or I had some other conversation, I never got a sense of what the board felt about something without having to vote on it. So, hopefully this can get us closer to that, because I think you deserve to know what I believe about a certain issue or I don't know yet and I can say I don't know and that's fine, because I have to learn a little more. I did go to the Creighton Manning meeting and I still don't understand it, so I'm glad I'll have a repeat. But, but I do think as, as residents, you deserve to know just what we think about items and we deserve to hear what you think in ways that maybe are a little bit better or different than what we've done in the past, so.
Yeah, I, I agree with you Judy on, on all of that. And again, what we're trying to do here is, is to create a scenario where the public, everybody, including like I said on the screen, gets a chance to know what's Vinny Muldoon all about, what's Judy all about, what's Mayor Flanagan all about, you know, and just have open debate and dialogue. Again, disagreeing, Bruce has certainly, certainly have done things I have, Mayor Flanagan has, Young Fineran over there has, Jess, we are all different people, all different views, different opinions. We have the one common goal, I firmly believe, is to make this town better. That's why we're giving up all our time to do this and we want you guys to know and the public to know exactly where we stand, whether you agree with us or disagree with us, but at least it's not like, ah, they're just sitting up there saying nothing, doing nothing except for, yeah, yeah, and then we all go home and people are like, what is that all about? So, to me, more information is better. I think moving forward, alls I ask, Mayor, is again, if we ask for agendas on the, or items on the agenda, just if we can, again, they're just to inform the public, have a good discussion between ourselves and then figure out where we all stand and have a vote and I think it's good for everybody and, you know, I'm, I'm looking forward to it and I'm looking forward to this whole scenario and just a little bit more open debate on everything, that's all. So, thank you.
I join in all your, you know, I'm all for, I, I actually made this exact point in the past and the only thing really that didn't get on was the traffic and, you know, people can just disagree on that. I think we should watch the engineers first, but yes.
And I would agree with that. I would need to look at it again too and rely on trustee Fineran and the traffic committee for a little more details on it.
Yeah, yes.
Yes, I understand sometimes we want more information, but I also think it's very important to get involved through the process. I mean, you know, information comes out, maybe there, there had been a lot of discussions, many meetings on the traffic committee, the previous one. So, we did have a lot of information. So, I think now we're in the process. So, I, I think discussions are important, not just the, at the end of the process, but also along the process. So, people can give us feedback and they can give us input. So, I think it is very important. Now, sometimes we don't have the perfect information, we don't have a meeting, maybe there would be five meetings, maybe there would be just one. I don't think we have to always wait for the next meeting. I think it is important to just get feedback along the way in the process. Thank you.
You will have lots and lots of feedback in traffic. I was on the traffic commission for two years and we have regular meetings and trust me, you will hear feedback. We also have had many meetings with Creighton Manning that we're open to residents where they presented, they explained their conclusions and residents and is the meeting on the Stewart Avenue, that was in the library basement?
It was.
Is it on the website?
I have not seen it, but I'm not the best answer on that.
We had a Zoom meeting. It was interesting, a lot of the traffic calming is not intuitive and I have, because I was on for two years and I've heard many now presentations, beginning with the Cathedral Avenue Road Diet and all the different, and, and that, they kind of build on each other because you start to, now I, I know all these traffic calming concepts, which when you first hear may seem like that doesn't make sense, that wouldn't help. You're going to learn a lot, it's a very interesting field. I don't feel equipped really to present the way Creighton Manning, although I've heard it many times and I understand it, I, I do think it's good to hear from the engineers to let them share it with you. And I do remember at that meeting, we had a residence there and I remember one resident being like, oh, this is better than I thought it was going to be. So, I think it's, it's worth listening and encouraging residents who may be questioning a road diet on Stewart Avenue to kind of take a little time to listen to that and understand. I know one thing was cut through, you know, someone was posting, it's going to cause cut-through traffic. That's exactly the type of things that the engineers study. They consider that and they will not recommend something if it's going to cause cut-through traffic, you know, they balance all those things. So, I'm excited about your enthusiasm. Traffic is hugely important in the village and it's just.
I hate to.
That, that was why I didn't put it on really, because I think we need to understand the engineering part of it.
So, just to, not about traffic, just for my own education, what is the procedure, if that's the right word, for putting items on the agenda? So, if someone, if any trustee wants an item on the agenda, they submit it? Maybe you could, I don't know who, I don't know, Gary or Mary, whoever.
I've done this before.
Actually, let me speak to that as the mayor, since I make the agenda and I'll tell you, the best thing is to talk to me. And I talk to you a lot Judy, I talk to you a lot Michelle, Ed, you know, maybe that communication is important, that we are speaking to each other. So, I don't hear seven days before when the agenda's getting put together, three items at four o'clock, need to go on the agenda and it turns out those items don't quite make sense based on what I know Michelle's working on. So, the best way to have an effective agenda is for us to communicate and if you have ideas, talk to me, I answer the phone, I'm happy to talk to you, I'm excited about all the things we're working on. I think we have a lot of common goals, so.
And we'll do that.
The key is to communicate and I think, you know, we're here to support each other and to get things on the agenda to help move the village forward. So, that would be as far as the process, there are rules that say it needs to be seven days before, but the best thing is for us to communicate and.
We will do that moving forward. I got one quick one on the traffic, just I've been involved a lot over the last two weeks with, with Ed and Stewart Avenue is a big deal. I've talked to a lot of people and again, they don't know a lot of the information that we're about to get, but they're concerned about, traffic calming is one thing, traffic jams is another thing.
Traffic greed.
So, it's great to have the, the term traffic calming and I agree with it, if you can pull it off without all the other things that are going to affect people. And when you go from three lanes to two lanes, it's a huge deal, because if, if we get it wrong, you know what I mean? It's, it's going to be a problem. I know you can go back and re-scratch the road and repaint the lines and re-stripe it and go back to three lanes, but we really want to think it through and my most important thing, I love engineers, I deal with engineers every day of the week, I have an engineering mind myself and in the last stuff I do, but the best way is to listen to the residents because they know it better than anybody and listen to the engineering firm. Put both together and then whatever comes out of that, you know, that's really has to be the best thing for the village because it's, it's important. We, we don't want more traffic, more traffic jams, longer to get through town, kids, moms trying to get their, their kids to the bus stop or the, the schools and everything else like that, every morning, every evening. So, we just look at the big picture and we don't want to hold up John Barone either from getting this thing done, because we want to get Stewart done as fast as we can, because it's a huge disruption, especially from people coming from the east side of town into town, huge. So, we'll, let's, let's do everything we can to move it along as best we can. Thank you.
We will, we will for sure.
Very important, you know, every road's important in the village, but that one's really like iconic and traveled by so many. So, if we can get that Zoom on and I think to your point, the one other thing is to get, to the extent you can, to get residents, you know, kind of educated on this is really helpful too, because I know myself and most people may have an initial feeling and then you're going to hear this presentation and it could change and we want to make the best decisions for the residents in the village. So, if we can get that up on the website, hopefully by tomorrow or Monday, then not only can you all watch it, but you can encourage residents to watch it.
Yeah, I discussed a few things with trustee Fineran, thank you for the information and discussions. So, I think we, I agree, we agree, talk about some concerns, you know, in a traffic jam congestion and also, you know, like government routes that people might be taking and also, you know, it could, you know, if one of the traffic jam, maybe the business out front in that cemetery could be affected. People could be thinking about going elsewhere, you know, to avoid it. And another thing would be, you know, emerging vehicles, where you produce the length from length, make two lengths wider, the other one being for very narrow shoulder, for emerging vehicles, it might be difficult. So, just things, I think there are many concerns and I'm looking forward to the next meeting
Sure. And you'll be invited to, to speak with Creighton Manning as well.
You will. Mayor, can I just make a comment?
Sure.
To trustee Muldoon's point, you know, there's a pretty extensive road rehabilitation, so we don't want to paint the lines and then scarify them, scrape them off. It's just not a good thing to do, although it's possible. It is possible and the people who've been driving Stewart the last few weeks have been experiencing a sort of traffic calming with the work crews out there.
That's true.
So, it's an important decision whether you're for it or against it. What I want to propose, and I think John and I have talked about this, is that whatever you want to do, we can put out cones or barriers to mimic the striping, so you can experience it real time during the, a full week with school and in fact, then you can get feedback based on that, because, and then you can make a decision with a little more knowledge. I think, I think Creighton Manning might even support something like that. How many of those cones are going to be driven over?
They do this all the time and even we did the crosswalk without it, but that is one of the, you'll pay a little bit more for it, but they'll do a trial.
That's, that's a great point, but just to give you an idea, I live on Brook Street, I travel Stewart and Washington, make those lefts and rights probably 10 times a day from morning to night, different times. I don't think there's anybody who probably travels that road more frequently than I do, just because of what I do for a living. I will tell you, this week and then the last week, when they're doing the car on the right side, which was one lane closed, I was backed up at 11 a.m., 11 o'clock. Best time in the world to cross town was 11 o'clock or somewhere just after lunch, right? The traffic was backed up beyond John Street and I sat there and two times in the last week, I'm just being straight up, I called customers, say, guys, I'm going to be 10 minutes late. Took me an extra good 10 minutes to get through, it was backed up and that was at 11 o'clock in the day, it was backed up between John Street and, 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 and Washington. So, we just, we have to, again, listen to everything, but it's, 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 it's going to be tricky, that's all.
You were going eastbound, is that right? Or you're heading west? Got it? We will, we will rip this apart. Yes, we will.
All right, so we'll move on now to the other item, which is adding the P O A website link to the Welcome to Garden City page. So, one thing on this is the website, we have a new website, communications, we have made some advances, but there's a lot of work to be done on our village communications and the website is a big project ahead of us. I have met with, you know, spoken with our village clerk, I've spoken with Judy Courtney and I've spoken with some communication volunteers and I hope within the next six months to have a, some significant progress on the website. If you go on the website, the Welcome to Garden City portion, no one's really updated that in a really long time. You look, there are 15 organizations and I'm not sure, I think the girls lacrosse is outdated, you know, it's not even the right organization. There's a lot of work to be done. Some may say we should just take it down now, because it's such a incomplete, a, you know, presentation of clubs and organizations, but that is something that I am looking forward to addressing. I think we need to really just think about what our website should be, how people can interact better with our website and what information is most important, where it should be on the website. It's a big project, we may be finding that we need to hire a consultant to help us with that. I do have some trustees I'll be working with and also volunteers, but there may be more of a expenditure on that. So, the website is something. is something that is on the shortlist of things to be done. As far as this particular item, there had been a, an area in the Welcome to Garden City that had a lot of inaccurate dated information that I removed, because I thought it was better not to have any information than to have inaccurate information. So.
Mayor, I got a quick question. Who took down, and how many years ago was it, since the information? If somebody wanted to go in and onto the website for the POAs, when was that taken down? What year was it taken down? And why was it taken down? And who authorized it to be taken down? Do we know that?
It was.
I'll let Bruce speak to that.
I'll do this. It was done two and a half years ago by then Mayor Cosmo Vincent Ali. He was a FabGC mayor. And the feeling was, and I would concur with that now, the property owners associations and the community agreement party are basically one and the same. It's a political party, a very successful political party, ran a very, very good, intelligent campaign. But that's what it is. When he took them down, the FabGC executive board also said, we don't want to be on there either. And we've stuck to that. I don't think you want to have political organizations on there. I mean, do we want to have the Republican Party on there?
No, hold on, Bruce.
Let me finish. Let me finish. No, no, no. Let me finish. Michelle.
Bruce, excuse me.
Michelle and Vinnie. Vinnie, let me finish, please. Okay, sir? No, 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 no. Okay, please. Okay. And what I was saying is, do we want to have all the political parties on there? I just don't think that's, you know, appropriate at this time. And that's one of the reasons why it was done two and a half years ago. And I see no need to do it now.
So just, I know, I just, excuse me.
And I don't know why, at some point, it did end up back on the website. No one ever, there was no board discussion.
Got you, yeah. But this is just, this is just coming from a rookie here. I'm the ultimate rookie here. Everybody I've told, when I started a run for this position, I'm a rookie. I wasn't involved in FabGC, and I wasn't involved in POA. So you're telling me tonight that the POA is a political party?
Between, they're part of the community agreement party.
But they're actually a political party. You have to, you know, you either register as a political party or not.
I mean, you have a situation.
Community agreement party.
They're political. We'll just believe it. So, and I know, Michelle, you want to say otherwise. There will be a disagreement.
They are not political parties. The CAP community agreement is a political party. They are separate from the POAs. The POAs are a civic organization. FabGC is registered as a political party.
We are.
The POAs are not registered as civic organizations, not for profit.
Then explain to me why the Eastern and the Estates POA had, you know, meet the candidates night, but none of the FabGC, none of the FabGC candidates were invited. That's.
FabGC candidates have been invited when I was running, when I ran it. That's true. Because I was president, and they chose not to.
Not this recent election.
No, we didn't have any.
Twice, and you said no. So we're like, all right, forget it.
I, and you know what, I don't know that this, we could go on all night, and it's already getting to be a late meeting. I will say, I never thought the POAs were political, having grown up here. When I decided to run for trustee, I learned that they were very much political. And it was a one-party system that was near impossible to challenge. And you were part of that challenge, Bruce Torino, which is fun. I mean, people up here have been on both sides. So as far as we could debate how they're registered, do they do civics? Yes. But have I sat in a POA meeting of my own Western POA, in front of the meeting with Mike Sullivan, who is running for trustee in the, you know, behind me, I sat in the audience and heard an officer, Maureen Traxler, tell everyone, we have a candidate that you have to vote for, and it's Judy Courtney, who lives in the East. And I was sitting right there, and I'm a trust, I'm not finished.
Can I call a point of order?
No, no.
We are right now.
No, you can't. So I do think within the POAs, and I've spoken to a lot of people, after I was first elected as trustee, I went to POA meetings all that whole year. I then ran again. And I think it's very hard to separate CAP from the POAs. There's a long history. It's kind of fascinating. I'm not saying it's bad. It is what it is. The POAs were, provided us with all of our leaders, all of our trustees, the mayor, and every board and commission was filled by the POA for many, many years. And that is just what our history is. And I think, I don't really want to have a big sparring debate here. And Judy Courtney and I, when we first met, I wasn't going to bring up the POAs that came up. And I think let's.
So can we agree and move on, that we're either going to put the POAs back on the website, or we're not? Can we do that?
Right.
That was the motion.
So I think, I will say, I obviously won't be voting for it. I do think, knowing, you know, or considering their political activities, I don't think it's appropriate for a board of trustees to be put in, certainly voting. If you want to vote, put all the political organizations on the website, that would be one thing. But to sit up here, it would be like if I got elected and I voted for FabGC to be put on the website alone, you know. So I don't think it's an appropriate vote, but you're, I'll let you.
Make a motion.
Make your motion.
That the clerk be directed to put the website for each of the four POAs on the village website as under the Welcome to Garden City. That's the motion.
All in favor? All opposed? Did you vote?
Abstain.
Okay. All right. So.
But just, just so we're clear.
Who might be in favor, two opposed, and one abstained?
Ms. Mayor, if I just might have the floor for a second. So I guess this would allow us, and I'm just asking the question, to put other organizations on there that, well, we'll consider putting other organizations on the website, correct?
The POAs, the POAs, again, coming from the rookie in the room here, the POAs and the community agreement party is what this town was founded on for 100 years, until FabGC came along. And I was the first one to say, listen, let's, let's have a new group come in and shake it up. And it's all great, great people, great ideas. But to say that, you know, somehow, you know what, of course, every organization is political to some degree. But is it a political party, or is it not a political party? Every organization has political views. That's a big difference between political views and a political party. POAs has been a part of this town since it's been started. And to me, it's absolutely crazy that we can't agree, all eight of us, even though I respect everybody for not doing that, that we can't agree to put the POAs website up on our village website. I think it's crazy.
To answer your hypothetical.
Yes, sir.
If you have five votes.
You can put anybody in.
Yes.
On.
Remember?
Got it.
We had that conversation, the rule of five.
Yes.
So I'll just.
So you're saying, wait, I want to address trustee Torino. So you're saying if trustee Fineran wants to put the Unity and Common Sense Party on the website, he would need to get five votes?
I can, I can put them on the website. I think that I can put the Unity and Community and Common Sense Party on there. We don't always need a board vote to do anything on the website.
Yeah.
So, okay, the vote has passed. I will just note, to your point on the history, one of the things that I expressed to trustee Courtney is, I think perhaps we're at a time when we should recognize the contributions of the community agreement. It was 100 years, to your point. It's a village we all love. We're all up here volunteering because we care deeply about it. We moved here, we think it's a great place. Recognize the contributions of the community agreement and the POAs. But I think we should also recognize the contributions of For a Better Garden City.
Hundred percent.
An organization that, against all odds, opened up our elections in this village after a century. And now we're here. And what I'd like to look forward to is like, where do we go from here? We do have, and I think, Vinnie, you kind of nailed it there. You said, well, it's good to have some new guys. Yeah, well, you had one party, now you have another party. I don't, I don't particularly love a, I think a lot of us were probably not happy with the, kind of the tone of the last election. I think it was divisive and not great for our community. And I'd like to turn a corner on that. So maybe the way is to recognize contributions of both groups and pick our path forward here.
Absolutely.
That's where I'm at. All right. So we'll move on to the formal agenda. As far as the appointments for tonight, oh, sorry, citizen comments on agenda items.
Hi, how are you guys? That was a long discussion there. So I had, I've been doing some research, and you know, there's been a lot, this is in reference to number eight. You know, everybody I've talked to, I've talked to Hokel's office, Di Spizito, Laura Schaefer, and a lot of the onus for these noise violations, trucks, illegal mufflers, is put on the local police department. Now, I had a question for Mr. Fishburg. Is there a village ordinance specifically addressing loud vehicles? Because I wasn't able to find one. But it doesn't address vehicles in any way. So that's one thing I'd like to ramp to the board, is possibly having the village create an ordinance referring specifically to vehicle traffic. And then the next thing I wanted to talk about was in regard to the police budget. So I've done some research. Rockville Center, which is a very similar, is, I don't know, is it Village, or whatever it is, they have a village budget of $54 million, and a police budget of $10.3 million, which is about 20% of their budget. Garden City has $110 million budget, and about $11 million to the police, which is about 10%. So also, Bronxville, New York, has a budget of $53 million, and a police budget of $8 million, which is about 15% of their village budget. So I would like to see at least a 50 or 100% increase in the police budget. Thank you.
Unless anybody has anything to say.
Oh, thank you.
Just one quick thing. Steve, I don't know that your numbers were correct, because the budget that we passed last meeting was about $71 million. The 30 might be, is it debt? I don't know if it's debt, Steve. So it's really. Thank you. Thank you. I should have known that. Thank you very much. Thanks, Bob. So it's really one out of seven. It's one-seventh, so it's 14-ish percent. It's not 10%.
Okay. I'll do more research. But I think Rockville Center is still around 20% of the village budget. Yeah, thank you.
I'm going to go from memory on this, and this is in a report that I submitted to the Board of Trustees three months ago. And I know the mayor circulated it to everyone. And I think the police accounted for 45% of the payroll costs of the Village of Garden City. It's the single biggest, or maybe it was 41. I know it was over 40. It's the single biggest department. And the issue in terms of $100 million for a budget versus the village's budget is about $67 or $68 million for the current year. Those other things are the Water Authority, and the pool, and the tennis, in terms of those are the enterprise funds. And then in terms of trying to compare things to other municipalities, you have to see what things roll up into the actual municipality. So the, the police is the largest category of payroll for the village, which is probably the right way to think about it. I don't know what the payroll percentages are for these other municipalities.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other comments, citizen comments on agenda items?
Kathleen, or for Marlon, excuse me. I guess Mr. Blake could answer these. Lucky pull. Referring to the bus and the exercise equipment, when, first of all, when would the bus be made available? I understand it's being painted now. Or that I've heard, the rumor.
We were able to effect some savings by buying a bus that has already been manufactured as in stock at the dealer. We will be able to acquire that bus as soon as we can do the financial transfers with Mrs. Wu's office.
So it's sort of still up in the air as to when we will see it moving on the ground?
Yes.
Okey-dokey. Thank you. And the exercise equipment over the same thing? We will have to wait.
We have to wait until, it's like any other bid item, Ms. Sora, we have to get the contract signed by the vendor. Insurance has to be in place, bonding has to be in place. Probably looking at a timeframe of two months, maybe a little more.
Okay, like the fall we're talking about, give or take?
Two months, give or take.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other comments in the room on agenda items? Yes.
Mary Timmons, 6 Linden Street. I had, I thought it was a great conversation about the Stewart Avenue and two or three lanes. And actually, it came to my attention through Facebook. You know, somebody posted, does anybody know they're going to be doing this, as if it's happening? So it was interesting to listen here. And I, trustee Vinnie has mentioned that, you know, putting, it's going to cost a lot of money to set the roads up so that we can see if two lanes work, and might have to revert to three. But I remembered I had driven across country, and I had seen something where they were working this out. And I found it online. And it's PEXCO. They make temporary overlay markers for just the situation you're talking about. I don't know how much they are, but if you go to PEXCO, P-E-X-C-O, you might find them. The second point is just on the noise ordinance. I was in a situation where a cell antenna company put an antenna in the yard. It was extremely noisy. I found out that all I had to do is get the, the noise monitor, and based on the noise ordinance, it would have to be taken out at a certain level. The level was high enough for it to be removed. But then I learned that we really don't have a real noise ordinance in Garden City. However, Town of Hempstead does. And all we had to do was really copy the wording from another town or village, and put it on Garden City's laws or ordinances. And we were, it was done. So it's really sad to know 100 years old, the POAs, et cetera, and we don't have a noise ordinance. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I will let you know, we had a meeting, the EAB began to, and we've had so many issues with the water and the lead in the water. But we did have a little session on noise. And part of that was review, and kind of leading into, what should we do here? And so that's something that the EAB may be picking up in this coming year, under trustee Harrington and Ty.
And Mary, if you're on that committee, we're counting on you.
Any other comments on agenda items?
Good evening. I'm Rich Williams from Stewart Avenue, 411 Stewart Avenue. I actually came to, for one purpose, and I'm going to go to a second quickly. I came to say congratulations to trustee Courtney, trustee Ted, and Vinnie. I'm sorry, Vinnie, my congratulations also. Well-run campaign. I didn't like the results, but that's another story. But truly, I wish you the best. Godspeed with, with what you do. I didn't know we were going to get into Stewart Avenue right away. But as you know, I live on Stewart Avenue. Couple of quick observations. And I'm really looking forward to trustee Fineran, more detailed, what the studies tell us, et cetera. Because it is a complex issue. It is a very complex issue. I can tell you, though, from my standpoint, trustee Muldoon, he uses the road, I use the road. I use it all the time. And I'm very well aware of blockages and traffic, et cetera. But suffice to say that it's a really interesting observation over the past two or three weeks, as we've done the curbs. Traffic has disappeared. Now, the instance you talked about, trustee Muldoon, I happened to be there about the same time, et cetera. It was down to kind of one lane at Stewart and Franklin. It was not three lanes, not two. It was really down to almost one, blocking some other stuff. Having said that, what I've noticed is traffic has been reduced. I don't know where it went. I don't know where the traffic went, but it disappeared. And my wife said this to me three times. It disappeared from both sides for the past three weeks or so. Now, sorry.
Could you tell us what side of the street for?
I live on, I live on the north side. I live on the north side. So I come out and I head west, until I maybe turn around, et cetera. But I see both sides, obviously. I've taken pictures occasionally. So what I've noticed is, the traffic had to go someplace. Now, I'm told, I'm told by, reputation, not reputation, I'm told by. Now, I'm told, I'm told by, reputation, not reputation, I'm told by, by others that waves and these, these various Google devices tell you, don't go down Stewart Avenue, go someplace else. They've either gone to Old Country Road, Hempstead Turnpike, or someplace. The second part of the story for us is I've done my own little man on the street kind of survey. I found it something like 87 or 89% of the people who travel are not Garden City residents. Something like that, it's an enormously high number. So what we have is this traffic being pushed into the middle of Garden City and to what benefit to us? So when a Garden City residence who wants to come from the west or me want to go to the east or back the other way, I want to go west and they want to come east. We are impacted by non-Garden City traffic. So that's one thing I just want to say, and it is a complex issue. I understand that, you know, if we do this, there's also a historical issue, I don't know how many people know this, but maybe about 50 years ago, it was two lanes. And Garden City, Stewart Avenue, that part of it from Franklin to Clinton is the only street I know of in Garden City that's three lanes. And there's, we know from the Robert Moses, you know, build a bridge, if you make it three lanes, they will come. So they're coming to us without any benefit to us particularly, except maybe more traffic, maybe more accidents, we see the accidents, et cetera, I, I see them. So I'm interested in the results, what you're going to deliver to us and we'll be able to look at and analyze. But I, I would suggest to you that it, that by observation, traffic disappeared for the past three weeks. Some blockages, yes, I, I saw that, but when you see traffic disappear, there has to be a reason. And it hasn't, you know, it's not like something happened, it just gone.
Very interesting, if you, if I can just butt in here for a second, Creighton Manning will tell you that Garden City, north to south, east to west, is a, just a major cut through for Nassau County, we are landlocked, obviously there's no water on either side. So it is extraordinary, coming from the north, coming from the south, east and west. They will also tell you that, that there are unintended consequences of almost every action that you take for, for traffic, traffic coming. John Barone has spent a lot of time with us, it's all the time that we have spent with Creighton Manning, he has as well. So, you know, I look forward to sharing everything with you and obviously with the committee members. But there's one thing that I learned, traffic is a really interesting thing, it sounds really boring and oh, it's a snoozer, but it's really quite fascinating.
I, I concur and, and just on the same subject, if you will, the, the, the depth of the analysis and understanding that things have unintended consequences, there's no way of knowing that sometimes in advance. You just have to take, if you will, a bit of a leap of faith occasionally to do things. But I think making it better for Garden City and safer, I can tell you from one, one perspective, I am on a raceway right now. I literally a raceway, they come up that street 60, 70 miles an hour sometimes. And if you get it, you know, a little bit off, off the crunch hours, a really race up there. So reducing it in size would be really beneficial into reducing the speed at which people address it. I know my neighbors have, with children particularly, have a challenge of walking their children. You know, there's one lady two doors down from me, she walks over to the Lutheran to bring her children there. And she's deathly afraid of crossing some places. So I just want to touch on to say that Stewart Avenue was not my subject to come here, I really came to say congratulations. Secondly, and I can just touch on one thing, I would really, really, really like to see this board address and as quickly as possible, 6th Street. I think 6th Street is a real issue for us, I think it's, I've always been concerned since it's been closed, 6th Street at Cathedral and Cherry Valley. I know it's complex, I understand the backgrounds, but I think it in, it, it puts real challenges to our fire, our, our police, our ambulance in terms of getting access to the Adelphi area, to Adelphi itself, but to where two of my daughters live. It makes it very difficult at the, at the wrong time of day. So if you can put 6th Street up in the top two or three things to tackle, I would appreciate it. But thank you for your time and thanks for staying so late.
Thank you, just a update, I did do another outreach to the cathedral, as I shared with the board. And we are ready to present with them, we have some design plans and they know of our strong desire to reopen the roadway. And we're going to do everything we can to work with them to see that happen. So any other comments on non-agenda items? I'm sorry, for agenda items, sorry.
Well, I want to say first of all, you know, on behalf of the Say No to the Casino Group, oh, Monica Kylie, Huntington Road in Garden City, on behalf of the Say No to the Casino Group, Rich Catalano had to leave, but Richard Williams is still here and the Krug's and some of the other Say No to the Casino members are here and just want to really thank the board for their continued support in this battle and, and your, your support is crucial. And I just want to thank you for that. I do have my two cents on the Stewart Avenue, do you want to listen to 30 seconds of that? Okay, so 10 years ago, I wrote a letter to the Garden, Garden City News. An initiative led by the Eastern POA was concerned about the county's desire to widen the intersection at Stewart Avenue and Clinton. And the local residents were against this because we had our kids going to school and yada, yada, yada. But one of the main points of my letter was that when you make things larger and easier to get through, it just fills up with more traffic. So if you had made a new turning lane or made Clinton Road wider at that intersection so that there would be no delays. You'd wind up eventually with an intersection that looks like Old Country Road and Clinton, which is impassable by pedestrians. And so the idea is, Vinnie, you know, water infiltrates, right? Traffic flows like water, it goes to the point of least resistance. And we in Garden City have created many straightaways. You're coming from Garden City South, you're inching along at 15 miles an hour in a single lane of traffic. You get to Garden City Village, woo, two wide open straightaways with lights all the way down the street. What do you do, you hit the gas, we all do, everybody does. And so why do we have these beautiful Miniola Avenue into Franklin? It's a great straightaway and everybody jams on that gas pedal, why are we doing that? Why, why are we creating, like Richard said, a raceway on Stewart Avenue? So, you know, it may or may not be a candidate for a road diet, I have no idea, but I'm, I'm interested to see the traffic study. And I would also second Richard's observation that, you know, drivers learn when things are difficult. And so when Jericho Turnpike was all backed up with construction, where did we see a big increase in traffic? Stewart Avenue, Stewart Avenue was jammed when they were working on Jericho. Well, maybe we shouldn't make it so easy for traffic to come here and maybe it can go back to Jericho Turnpike.
Thank you, any other comments on agenda items? All right, any comments on Zoom on agenda items?
Hi, this is, this is Kathy O'Hara from 67 Hilton, and I just want to make sure you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you, hello.
So I normally attend in person these meetings and like tonight, I'm so glad I didn't attend because one, I don't like crossing Stewart Avenue there by the police, police station late at night because it's dangerous, I think. So like it just goes to the point that yes, Stewart Avenue needs to be looked at, even between Hilton Avenue and Franklin. And with everything else that got discussed tonight, I think there's a couple of observations, I just want the trustees to know. Is that for the new trustees, you'll see that there's a lot, there's a big attendance for these meetings every month. And so there's no need to worry that when the residents are not going to voice our, our concerns about things or our ideas. And I really appreciate when the trustees sit and listen. I can tell when a trustee is sitting there and they're actually listening to what people are saying. So don't worry about like giving residents the opportunity because we're going to speak up. And the other thing I want to mention is that in terms of the Traffic Commission, I normally go to the traffic, I'm more interested in the Traffic Commission than I am in the Board of Trustees. So it's another thing to know, is that there's a lot of residents that are involved in the Traffic Commission and everything that's been done the last two years with the Traffic Commission. And I, and the other thing is that I, just as a suggestion, I think the board should look at having a pre-meeting before these board meetings. Because it's very, it's uncomfortable for me to watch the Board of Trustees to be going back and forth with each other. These things should be taken offline and handled outside the, outside the meeting. So it just doesn't, I voted people in because of their professionalism and their ability to get things done. Having a meeting, a Board of Trustees meeting that goes to past 10 o'clock is just, it, it's not sustainable and it doesn't, it just doesn't make sense. So that's my comment for tonight, thank you for, for the time.
Thanks, any other comments on Zoom on agenda items?
Hello, good evening, everyone, Bob Barone, 28 Grove. I was listening to trustee Muldoon and I, I agree with him 100% that the fact is that you may want to calm traffic. The idea of calming traffic, but you may not end up with that as a, as a result of people sitting in bumper to bumper traffic and not moving. Plus the fact you're polluting the area with all, with all these people idling. And I'd like to know what the Police and Fire Department think about that. Because they, they come out onto Stewart Avenue and if they have to go east and you cut down a, a lane down and everything else, how are they going to get through? I'm over in the eastern area and believe me, I know where the traffic goes, they're going up Commercial, they're going down further and going up Meadow. And that's where they're going, so they're going through the neighborhood areas rather than stay on, on Stewart. So this thing should really be looked at and I'm waiting to see the report and see what their findings were. Thank you, and thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. O'Hara Rose, we will get that shared, I'm surprised so many people didn't follow, just another note that we need to work on our communications. We'll make sure that that meeting is shared and also the report on the Stewart Avenue. We'll maybe send it out in alerts to make sure everyone knows where to find it. All right, any other comments on non-agenda items? Okay, I'm sorry, on agenda items. All right, so we'll move here to the formal agenda and this evening I just have two appointments to propose for. All right, before we get to the formal agenda, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the April 1st, 2024 Board of Trustees meeting? All in favor? All right, the minutes are approved. And on the formal agenda, I have two appointments for Chair zoning Board of Appeals, Chair, I'm recommending the appointment of Michael Schroeder, who has been serving as Chair in that position.
So moved.
All in favor? Right, that is approved. And I'm also moving on the, there is one term that's up, it's alternate member, Alex Bocowski, who's been serving as the alternate. And I am proposing appointment, reappointment of him to another term as alternate on the zoning Board of Appeals. All in favor? All right, so that is passed. And the other appointments are being deferred. All right, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar? And that is minus the, taking out the resolution which we've already voted on. All in favor? That passes unanimously. We've already covered the discussion item on the POA website. And at this point, are there any citizen comments on non-agenda items?
Good evening, Brian Mulrooney, Kenwood Road. On March 1st, a report from Ruskin, the rest of the, whatever. Was, was put on the website and reported by the mayor at the, the following meeting. It said that the firm had analyzed the St. Paul Alliance proposal. But they said the plan is unfortunately vague and critically incomplete. My question is, what proposal did they review and who presented it to them?
It's, it's my understanding, Ryan, that it was a proposal that was on the Alliance's website. It was maybe a, I'm guessing here, eight to 10 page deck.
Yeah, that, that's an outline of a proposal, it wouldn't be a formal proposal. I would think that if we're going to hire a firm to review a proposal, you should at least let the people who mock up the proposal and present the proposal. We have no idea what they reviewed, I mean, I'm reading through this, I don't know who this firm was, are they, are they? I didn't see them in the red book either, are they municipal bond professionals, public finance professionals? Because I didn't see them in the municipal bond red book.
So Mr. Mulrooney, if you have an additional plan, and I think we had tried any materials, you can forward them to the Board of Trustees.
Okay, just going on, because a lot of these things they said, I've been in the municipal finance business for over 20 years, I'm not going to say I'm an expert, but I have a working knowledge. One thing it said, that the village can borrow funds at triple tax exempt rates, but the SPA plan would not be able to. I have no idea why they would say that, if you, if you issue municipal bonds through an IDA, they're triple tax exempt. So why would they say the SPA plan would not be able to issue triple tax exempt bonds? Just keep going. Then it also said that the collateral would not be acceptable for, to a lender sufficient to support a large loan. Did they go to major banks and buy-side firms to ask them if they would look at such a proposal and be interested in the financing that proposal? Or they just make that up? Do they tell us who they talked to? Or they just decided, nah, but nobody will take it? Because if you've looked at the calendar lately for municipal bond issuance over the last year, it's at an extreme low over the last decade. So the buy-side is dying for issuance, especially in New York off the run issuance, which would take me to another point, it says here. I won't get into labor costs, that's not my line of business, but it said that, at the end here, that they'll be costly to the village because they would have to oversee the residents who are working on the project. I don't know why, if you have volunteers working on a project, it's more expensive than paying people, but I guess that's another highlight of their report. And it also said that we would, that the SPA plan would not be able to finance at a competitive rate or would be more costly than the village doing the project. The SPA plan extends the financing over 30 years, something the village could not do through general obligation bond. Now, if you are a senior citizen and you, and the SPA plan was enacted, that would be over 30 years, meaning the people who lived here for 30 years pay the majority of that bond off. And a senior citizen who may live here for only five more years, they wouldn't get the brunt of it as they would in a general obligation bond that's 10, 15 or 20 years. So I disagree with just about every bullet point, the last bullet point is so ridiculous, there's no reason to read it. But how much money do we pay this firm to review a proposal that was never presented by the group that mocked it up?
All right, so I, I will say one thing, since you've come up to speak, we did, we went with all the information we have, I know there had been outreach by people on the committee and the board here to get more details from your group. We welcome them, we will be, as we move forward, we will be looking at every possible financing option for St. Paul's. So we absolutely welcome the reports from any experts, we never got any reports from an expert from the St. Paul's Alliance. And would love to have it sooner the later, or the better, anything you have, because.
For the record, I helped come up with a financing plan for the St. Paul's Alliance and nobody ever contacted me. I never knew there was a firm going to review the plan and I would still love to know how much it costs and why that, that cost was approved. When they reviewed a plan that the group that came up with, they couldn't even present it to them. When they reviewed a plan that the group that came up with, they couldn't even present it to them.
So as, yeah, as far as, I won't argue with you.
No, no, no.
We have two people here who I think I asked to try and get any details you could on their financing plan. They weren't provided, right?
Mary, it's a little different. When you've asked about us to get the details, we have made it very clear that we need to speak to the people directly and instead of just getting the paperwork, Ryan Mulrooney or Frank McDonough or Peter Cole will come directly and speak to any committee that we have. We have not wanted to ask them to come directly, or you have not wanted to ask them to come directly and speak about it. You just wanted the paperwork and we need to ask the gentlemen, women, men and women who have worked on the St. Paul's Committee over the years to come and speak directly to whoever the experts are that we have. And we refuse to do that as a board.
So let me just, um, be clear. I went to all of the presentations of the former committee. I thanked the former committee for their work and we had extensive 28-page packet that I shared with everyone from your final presentation. So I don't see that there's any reason we wouldn't have a report from the finance experts. If there's a finance expert or more details, if there are details of the plan that weren't put on the website for some reason, by all means, put them on the website or share them with us.
I got a quick question. And again, it's going to be short. Do we have an idea how much, again, we paid, you know?
Yes. I don't know, but I can tell you that we haven't been billed, Ryan, and the, the firm is on retainer. So if it's not covered by the retainer, we will be getting a bill and we will certainly tell you what it is. Secondarily, your point is taken. The, the, the chapter has not been written on financing here and the chapter has not finally been written on, on a conservancy. So we appreciate your comments and we are an open book as it, as it relates to your.
And this is the last meeting I'll attend. Obviously I'm moving, so I'm, all I'm going to say is that we spent two years on this. We were never able, allowed to present the St. Paul's Alliance Plan. That came after the St. Paul's Committee was disbanded by the mayor. We never presented the plan, so I don't know where you saw it. We put an outline of the plan on a website. If you're going to present our plan to, I don't know what professionals they are. They're not public finance professionals. I don't know what professionals they are. Why you wouldn't let, say, hey, we want to hear your plan. You have 30 days to come up with a formal plan, report to submit to these people we're hiring on retainer to review it. That's what, you know, that would seem, in a normal world, that would seem so, something that seems reasonable, not to give, to hire a firm that is not, I don't know where, what their expertise is, but it's not public finance. If you read that report, it's a disgrace. But to, to submit an outline of a plan to be reviewed and pay these people to review it who are not public finance professionals is a waste of money. It's a waste of time. And I think there was an agenda behind it. Thank you.
Let me just, I just want to respond to a few things. First of all, as far as the numbers, that 30-page report that I shared included a monthly, it had regrettably my name on one of the proposals and trustee Kelly's.
That was not the St. Paul's Alliance Plan. That was a plan that you guys asked for.
The mayor's committee. So let me just be clear. The mayor's committee, it was a 28-page, it had a dollar amount and I believe it's the same dollar amount that's on the St. Paul's Alliance page, which led me to conclude, and it's, I thought the same people on the Alliance. So I presumed that that number that was presented to the public without, I'll note, it being vetted by the treasurer or any of our experts, that number that the former committee went out to the public with, uh, we were never provided with any background where that number came from, what the financing was, what the structure was, none of that.
I tried to address that before and I was shut down by trustee Kelly. I'm talking about the St. Paul's Alliance Plan that has nothing to do with those other reports or other plans. It's a completely different plan. When you gave this plan for this firm to review, what was the security type of the bond issuance?
That was from the St. Paul's Alliance, but I'm.
What was the security type of the bond issuance that you presented to them?
I don't have the papers that were.
You know why you don't? Because it was never in the outline. So you don't even know what the, what the secure, what it was. And, and, and that has a direct, that has, that has a direct effect on the legalities of it. So how could you give this, this, this plan to them when you don't even know the security type of the bond issuance?
So let me also to trustee Fineran's point, where at the beginning, nothing is decided on financing. So by all means, if you have materials that weren't provided, please provide them. And I'll also note that the firm was not just hired for that one statement. It was larger advice, which the board is being, going to be briefed on shortly. So the sooner you could provide that, if you could get it to us within the week, I will give it to them so they can take a look at it before our briefing.
Mr. Mulrooney, good luck in your move, number one. Number two, you've pointed out a significant fact and we will take it under advisement for sure. And we will investigate the, the right way with the full program.
That's fine. All I'm saying, I'm not going to be here. All right. I don't, I don't, no dog in the fight. But do what's best for the village, not petty politics.
Yeah.
What we all want to do.
Guys, I want to make one comment, please, excuse me. Number one, Ryan, thanks for all your service in this community. Again, whether you agree or you disagree, you've put in a lot of hard work for St. Paul's Alliance and your family as a whole in this town has a, obviously, your, your dad, God rest his soul, and your family have earned their, their reputation and thanks for all your hard work. The one quick thing I would like to say as a businessman and as a gentleman who's lived in this town for a long time is I like to see a lot less money spent on consultants and lawyers. No disrespect to all the great lawyers in this room. We love you guys. But, but we have to be more conscious about spending our hard-earned tax dollars on consultants after consultants after consultants after consultants. All the best intentions. I'm not saying the intentions are not there. But it gets ridiculous when we look back over the last 10 years and see the amount of tax dollars that have been spent on consultants and lawyers about all the different things going on in this village. And, and honestly, our, our payback and our return on that investment is, excuse my French, piss poor. And we need to do a better job protecting the money that our residents are giving us in their tax dollars and spend it wisely. I know it costs money to do stuff. I get it. I'm all about that. But we have to be more cognizant as a board, as this board, the next board, the board after us, to protect the hard-earned tax dollars for our, our residents. So let's do a better job, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Frank McDonough, 141 Hampton Road. Yes, Ryan Mulrooney was in charge of the financing of the St., uh, St. Paul's as part of the prior mayor's committee, as I was part of the uses of that building. To make sure the record is correct, the village's advisors, capital market advisors, were informed that they could spend as much time as they wanted with the finance committee. They did not do so. At the time that there was a meeting at the senior center, they had also been advised that we were willing to describe the, uh, the finance plan at that time. The simple answer inconsistent with trustee Muldoon's question is that the plan was constantly attacked. It's not feasible. Well, the fact is that the village didn't have to hire Ruskin Moscow. They could have asked their own bond counsel, Hawkins Stellafield, who had approved an identical plan for several other entities in New York City. And so without having to go out and pay money, either if it's on retainer or not, to a real estate firm, they were hired for real estate purposes, not for municipal finance purposes. It might have been just, excuse me, as easy to talk to Bob Smith and say, Bob, which of your partners has worked on a financing like this? And he would have been told that that group, there have been over 22 institutions in the city of New York that has used the identical financing plan that was proposed by Ryan's committee. And that there were probably billions of dollars raised for the major institutions of New York. So rather than going to a real estate firm, which then the leader of the FABGC used to attack the SBA's finance plan, it might have just been as easy to call Hawkins Stellafield and say, Bob, which of your partners did this finance plan in the city of New York? And he would have gotten one of the 22 different institutions that had been worked on for that. And that would not have cost him anything. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks. And just to reiterate, please just send stuff within the week because we are continuing to get advice. Yes.
May I just to come, Mayor, just to comment on that? I hear your request to send information. I know a lot of work has been done on this. I guess my question is, why can't there just be a meeting where people talk through what was, because there's nothing, written word is great, financial numbers are great, but to understand the thought process behind it to me would be much more valuable. So while I appreciate your request for submitting information, to me, it's, it's a sit-down conversation to have between whoever, I don't know whether it's Ryan or whoever on, on that committee with, with the new consultants that we're working for. I don't know why they don't talk.
Who doesn't talk?
The, the, the former people who were working on this and the new consultants that we're working with.
Are you talking about the
That former St. Paul's committee.
Branstadter? Or are you talking about the council?
Branstadter.
Oh.
Right? Isn't that?
No. Branstadter's not doing the financing. We're, we're not at that stage.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, sorry.
You're talking about the St. Paul's Alliance or, or the conservancy, or the conservancy.
Yes, and Ruston Moscow, whatever their name was.
All right.
So to me, again, your point was well-taken about, you know, having a conversation is where the work gets done. I, I would reiterate the same value holds true for this conversation.
I think you'd need the experts in the room, frankly, I think.
Yeah, have them, but, but for them to understand where the alliance, for argument's sake, came from and how they got to their conclusion, if they're going to be a part of the, if, if the new group is going to be part of the discussion, I think a conversation with those who already worked on it is valuable. I, I don't know why we wouldn't have it.
We'll talk more because you're all going to hear all of the legal advice that we got on this topic and there'll be many more conversations on financing and I welcome all information. So.
Quite, quite simply, Ms. Judy, is, there's a, there's a different board. And, and, and there was a difference of opinion as to how we should proceed. So we have a different board now and we'll be proceeding the way that we decide to proceed.
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor and Board of Trustees. Robert Hurs, 111 Cherry Valley Avenue, Garden City. I provided separate packages for the new trustees that I gave to Vinnie and he circulated them. Jessica, hopefully you got yours and Judy, you received yours. Okay. And then everyone else gets the other white papers that are open. The white papers are the MOUs from Nassau County. Once again, I would like to point out that I have yet to receive a response from the Board of Trustees about my analysis of the village's financial state situation. This report was delivered to the board three months ago. I don't know if this report was shared with the new trustees, which is why I've distributed to them separately. It has many recommendations for how the Board of Trustees can improve the village's financial situation. I have, um, since the Board of Trustees has begun the collective bargaining process with the village's union, unions, I saw that an executive session was held just this past Monday. It is imperative for the Board of Trustees to use this process to address the village's mounting healthcare costs. For example, cash expenditures for healthcare are expected to grow by 36% in the three years ending in fiscal 2025. And at that point, they are expected to amount to $10.6 million. This rate of growth is not sustainable if the board wants to limit the tax burden, burden on the residents. Most importantly, total healthcare costs, including OPEB accruals, were $12.8 million in the last fiscal year or 19% of the village's revenues. When viewed in isolation, 8.1 million of that is OPEB or 12% of revenues. To put the village's OPEB costs into perspective, they amounted to more than two times the village's pension contributions. And the village has a very generous defined pension plan, which is well-funded because of the way New York State requires pensions to be funded. That's one thing where the state is fiscally prudent. And, and so that contribution is over two times what was contributed to pensions. Now, I try not to speak in, in jargon or use acronyms, so I will define OPEB to everyone. OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. It's basically everything that employees are entitled to when they retire, except for pensions. So the largest part of it is healthcare. It also typically includes life insurance and it can have some other things too. Most OPEB in the private sector does not exist anymore unless you work for a large union, unionized company. It still is prevalent in the public sector and I've spoken about this before. And unlike pensions, OPEB is not funded. And if OPEB were to be funded, and I did the math on this, and this was for 2022, it would require taxes to be raised by 25% for the next 20 years. And I've mentioned that before. So, so my report, which was done in a way that would be understandable to people that do not have a background in business or a background in finance. And although it might be rather long and it has 20, 20 exhibits attached to it, and exhibit 10, by the way, answers the question that Mr. Shoemaker had, and it's approximately 45% of the payroll is for the police department. The first five pages have a summary of everything that's in the report. And I also went at great length to come up with practical recommendations that the board can pursue, including I circulated the two MOUs that Nassau County used. One of them was with the largest labor union last year, the Civil Service Employees Association. And the other one was with the PBA. They got an awful lot out of their unions. I just provided that as a background, background information for you to use. And in that, they increase the timeframe that someone needs to work to receive post-career and retirement. The village currently requires people to work for five years to receive, 15 years, I'm sorry, to receive healthcare and retirement. Nassau County, for the largest union, increased that to 20 years from 15. And as a point of reference, I'm also bringing these things up with the Garden City School District because this issue is also problematic for them. In addition, Nassau County is transitioning their employees to a less costly health plan. And it's expected to generate savings of over 10%. And if the village did the same thing, it would save over a million dollars in healthcare costs. So as part of the collective bargaining process, Vinnie, I know you mentioned that the village should not provide another consultant. The village does need help in terms of designing the appropriate benefits. I am willing to help you as best I can. I'm not a village, I'm not a, I'm not a benefits consultant. I have analyzed corporate financial statements for over 35 years and I'm a CFA also. And I did work before that in public accounting. So I'm thoroughly versed in terms of finance. I'm not as well-versed in terms of benefits. I certainly have plenty of ideas. One of the other ideas that I have, which I think would be workable and would also be very pleasing to the unions, is I do not believe that many employees appreciate the value of other post-employment benefits. And the village could design a plan where they could pay the employees more in their salary and the employees could disclaim getting post-employment benefits. These employees might be perfectly happy going on Medicare Advantage and the average premiums for Medicare Advantage is, are only about $20 a month. So that may be a win-win. The village also probably needs to negotiate the issue of the new weight loss drugs, which are highly effective but very costly. And I provided some estimates in the report of what those drugs might eventually wind up costing the village. Apparently Medicare does not pay for these drugs, but that could be a bargaining point in terms of how you deal with the employees. The last thing which I'll be briefed about because I'll cover it in more depth with the next write-up that I send you away within the next couple of weeks. And it has to do with health savings accounts, which should be offered to the village's employees. Currently, they have flexible spending accounts and the health insurance plan for the rank-and-file workers, which is the largest union, according to what their deductibles are, they meet the requirements for health savings accounts. And in my opinion, health savings accounts are the biggest gift the federal government can give anyone because they basically have all the benefits of an IRA on the front end because they're tax deductible when the money goes in. And they have all the benefits of a Roth IRA on the going out or the exit because they're tax-free when they're withdrawn. So basically they marry all the benefits of a taxable IRA with a Roth IRA. Those things are not available. Those things are not available outside of such a vehicle. And the amount of money that can be accumulated in such a vehicle by, let's say, someone like a police officer, who would put in the maximum amount, which is a bit over $4,000 a year, and if it's likely to go up by 3% a year, that's the current limit, $4,440, $50, it would grow to about $500,000 in 30 years. And the tax benefit in doing that versus putting what they could in a Roth after paying taxes is almost $200,000. I think it's imperative for you to do a good job of explaining this concept to the employees.
I'm sorry, Robert. I'm sorry. It's probably seven or eight minutes now.
I'm wrapping up.
Yeah.
Robert, I'll tell you this, Robert. Since I'm doing finance, as soon as my daughter's wedding is done, she's gonna be married May 4th, we will set up a series of lessons. I promised you that, and I'm gonna hold to my word.
Thank you.
But we'll set it up. And with the finance committee, I'll have you in at every meeting. And then we'll also do sessions for the village residents with you, et cetera. I said I'll do it. I promise to do it.
Yes.
All the time. Do you have something to say?
Thank you. Oh, that's right. We have another comment on, citizen comment on non-agenda item. And we have an item we have to get back to to approve the scout soliciting.
Can we quickly just make a motion to approve the village clerk issuing the permit to the Boy Scout Troop 322, subject to the hours that Trustee Fineran has circulated?
Yes, second.
Do you want to give the hours?
Sure. Bottom line is that this late hour, folks, I've just, instead of making or allowing calls until 8 o'clock in the evening, we're gonna cut them back to 7 o'clock in the evening. I don't want to disturb people's dinner. And there's one or two little tweaks. It's all good. It's the same thing we did last year. It's a great cause. I just want to protect people's privacy but give the Girl Scouts enough time to raise the money and do what they want to do.
We love the Girl Scouts.
Yes, we do.
All right. So do we have a motion to approve the, it's, yeah. Do we have a motion to approve the request of Troop? What's the?
Troop 322.
Troop 322 to solicit with the minor changes proposed by Trustee Fineran?
So moved.
Favor?
Aye.
That is approved. Okay.
Mr. Wilton?
Yes, Mr. Wilton. There he is. He's still awake.
Good day, Mayor. Trustees, good evening. If you will indulge me for one minute to break the mood. John Lady, I wish your mom was here. Interesting meetings. So on the promenades, I want you to understand, obviously, I've been speaking to all the different businesses in the community. Belmont was always a separate standalone from the promenades. I explained to them that the Belmont would be lumped in with the promenades, and we would not be hosting a Belmont this year. Keep in mind, I'm gonna share the word disappointment because the Belmont, the highest profit day of the year for the businesses. So that said, it is what it is. We'll go forward from there. I have made a best friend named Mr. Barone. He and I, over the last couple of days, have been playing village psychiatrist on a major level. I have one landlord that I will tell you spent a great deal of time on the phone with me about the paving issue. It's the Laub Group, Mr. Michael Laub. He owns property where Key Food is, 45 Coffee is, Burgers Quokk Shop, TCBY, Luna Nails, Lex Unlimited, Pistro, Lenona Bella, Madison Taylor, and Prost. So he's the landlord that owns those properties. And I've spoken to the other landlords as well, but because it's so late, I'll try to summarize what I thought he had thought was a good idea. He said, "John, $42 a square foot is highway robbery." He said, "I can get it done for much less." He said, "I can give you affidavits approved for my contract." By the way, he has a very large real estate portfolio, so he can certainly give me information that I would believe is accurate. He said, "Although I'm not necessarily opposed to it, I called Mr. Barone and asked about the $42 and where it came from and how, and the insurance and the permits and the applications and the licensing of the people doing the job. My fear was if we had the different businesses hire Joe, hire Mary, and hire Bob, and they do it on their own, I think the end result could be, it could look like a checkerboard. It could be different. We said it before, whatever can go wrong could go wrong." He said, "I'm not opposed." And all the learned counsel here will understand this. In the language of some of his leases, the tenants are liable and responsible, the outdoor maintenance, painting, upgrading, and cleaning of it. He said, "Some of my tenants' leases do not have that." He said, "Well, I," and he's in the theory stage now, so I'm not making a statement of fact. He said, "If you could perhaps suggest to your Board that we do a special assessment where you take all of my properties, tell me what it's gonna cost." He said, "I will try to pass it on in the form of CAM to those tenants that I can, or I will ask those tenants to be a partner with me in doing because it's improving their business as well as helping me offset the carry cost." So he was amenable. I received phone calls from learned counsel from other property owners who wanted to challenge whether or not the code could be enforced. I said, "I did not go to law school." I said, "You can certainly reach out to the people that find it necessary to communicate those fine thoughts with me." Quick, what's going on in the village? I'll do that quickly. Core Life is leaving. Okay, as you know, they are liquidating their equipment as we speak. 953 Franklin Avenue, which was there in Anastasia, is becoming a compound pharmacy. 171 Seventh Street, which is next to Coquette, is supposedly becoming another compound pharmacy. I don't know if that's actually, is actually done yet. As far as the lighting goes, on 148.14, which I've been, I wish I read, some of the, and I agree that putting it on the village trees or whatever has its issues, but some of them have their own lighting on their own interior space. For example, Revel, he has it, he expanded it, but if he wants to put it just on the interior or Seventh Street Cafe, they want to keep it with illumination, not necessarily touching anything of the village property, but just for their tables and chairs at night because it becomes dark. So I would very much like to, I think, that a stay of enforcement, I think, is what we need to do. The, one, two, four of the landlord, I'm sorry, property owners today said to me, "John, we can't do this in 30 days. We have to reach out to people. We have to talk to people. I have to have my lawyer check my leases. I then have to negotiate with my tenant to see if I can get them to pay half." He said, "I recognize, by the way, if they don't pay half, I'm gonna be on the dime for this." But he says, "I may put up a fight if I'm gonna be on the whole dime."
This is back to the paving, correct?
Correct, back to the paving, okay. So I think that we need to really address doing that. I have Hilton Halls here. They came down to me in a note of humor. They said, "Sure, we'll repair them. We're just gonna put concrete down." You know, I mean, it's just the response. The McGuire family owns that. They're not here. They're a lovely family. So I think we need to really address this tonight. I'm delighted that the moratorium is in place. This will be gleeful to our business community tomorrow morning. Actually, when I'm leaving here, I'm going to speak with some of them tonight. But I think we need to really address this paper issue. This is a hot topic. I'll say it again. I've said it to the Board before. I'm the government, leading the village. I send you a letter. There's something you don't like. We're telling you that this is in the code. You have to do it. If you don't do it, okay, we're going to find you, maybe put you in jail, and that's it. Sorry. Thank you so very much. That is the perception. Okay? Regardless of how you may see it, that is the perception. So I'm imploring you to, let's bench the paper. Let's get it done. Ralph will know this. I had a conversation with Ralph three months ago. We had a very, very, four years ago, we did the, Ralph, was it called the, not the beautification program, it was called the downtown, what was it, Ralph?
Revitalization.
Revitalization program. And we did the Board, and it's been years ago. And I'll be very brief, but I really think we just need to put the papers, not on hold, I think they need to be done. I think it has to be addressed. But let's be a little kinder and a little softer with our approach to the property owners, our major taxpayers in the community. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
All right. I trust there are no more comments. Okay.
I just got one comment before this gentleman talks. I 100% agree, John, that the property owners, as a businessman myself and a property owner, needs more than 30 days to do this work. I think it's more realistic to give them, just my opinion, 90 days, not 30 days. Because there's a lot of logistics. It takes time, everything else like that. I don't know how we do that. I don't know how we extended. But we gotta be fair to people if we're asking them to do work, to give them the time, a reasonable amount of time, to do this work. But I don't know how we manage that, so.
I think we'll discuss it now at 10:30.
Yeah, absolutely.
At the end of the meeting. It wasn't brought up before tonight, so to be continued.
Yep.
Okay, yes.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Andrew D. Schumelde, Garden City. The St. Paul matter, I solved this three decades ago. I sent a letter to the Mayor and the Board. I don't know if they ever got it. But I solved this problem three decades ago, 1994. Maybe one day I'll present that letter to you or explain everything. Health care costs, I keep telling you, stay away from dairy. Dairy is what makes you sick. Humans are the only mammals that continue with dairy. We're the only ones that get sick. I mean, I never get sick. Next month, I'm gonna turn 74. And let me tell you, anybody who want to mess with me, they better think twice. Okay? I am in excellent shape, excellent shape. Okay? Belmont, Belmont is barbaric. Mayor, imagine somebody shoves a bridle in your mouth, a saddle on your back, somebody jumps on that saddle and has you run as fast as you can with all the spectators cheering that you run faster. This is barbaric. This should never be allowed anywhere, just like bullfighting. Okay? Crabgrass is great grass. Let it grow. Oh, what do we got here? Okay. All of these green spaces that everybody was recently speaking about, they are all doggy toilets, as is Seventh Street, the heart of the village. I spent a lot of time on Seventh Street. I witnessed the parade of dogs and what they do. If dogs are such a good idea, why are dogs not permitted at Board meetings? Do you think they would cause disruption of communication? What happens when people don't communicate? There's no unity. When there's no unity, there's no strength, okay? And what happens when there's no strength, okay? Doggies will be the death of us all. Think I'm kidding? Our soldiers, okay, stationed in Iraq and, let's say, Syria, what they are doing, they are protecting the multinational corporations as they steal the oil, okay? That's what our soldiers are doing, protecting multi-corporations as the multi-corporations steal the oil. Have you ever heard of like the terrorist group ISIS, Al Qaeda, Taliban? They want us out of their country, and they're not gonna stop until we're out, okay? World War III, that's what this is leading up to. Okay? Mr. Swazi, did you get that little note I'd sent you yesterday? Okay. Did you get a chance to open up that? Did you review that package of letters I sent you a while back? Did you get a chance to review those?
No, I haven't had a chance.
You haven't had that chance, okay? It's been like, what, like a month or two?
Andrew, excuse me. You do have one more minute, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
One more minute, okay? I include you as somebody who is involved in covering up, okay? A cover-up, okay? Yeah, I've been only a minute. Gave everybody so much more time. Okay, give me a second just so I could like speed this up a little bit. Okay, well, Mayor, I presented, I sent, okay, here's the thing. What is the process by which a member of the public contacts you via post office mail? What is the process if a member of the public wants to contact you via post office mail? What is that process?
I explained that at the last meeting you were at. My mail is opened by the village for me and sent to me.
Oh, it's sent to you? Okay, okay. Now, I have a set of letters here that were not sent to you, and I'd like to deliver these to you right now.
I think I've received them all because I did receive many letters from you.
Well, can you just accept this anyway? Just accept it anyway?
You can leave it there. Yep.
Well, who's gonna get it? It may be.
You can hand it to the village clerk right there.
Okay, and she'll give it to you?